Thank you, Director Peterson, for accommodating my request for a recess. And could you reconvene so I can respond?
Absolutely. Time is 5:08.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to share that it's my understanding that a notice was sent to the entire board by Sandra Marish via email at 4:46 advising that there would be a special meeting held at 5 o'clock on Friday. At least, that is my understanding. Secondly, that it did not contain all of the specifics with respect to the meeting, and that there was a follow-up email sent at 5:06 with more specific information related to the meeting. Secondly, I would share that whether or not there is insufficient notice, that insufficiency is waived if board members are present at the meeting in accordance with Colorado law. Section 2232-108.3 specifically states that any member may waive notice of the time, place, and purpose of such meeting at any time before, during, or after such meeting, and attendance thereat shall be deemed to be a waiver.
Thank you, Director Klemes. Oh, sorry.
Qualify that. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will proceed to the roll call. Hanson.
Here.
Meek.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Peterson, here. Ray.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Weiniger.
Here.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, into the acceptance of the agenda, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the agendas presented. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the agenda be modified or remove action as an acceptable outcome to Agenda Item Number Six. Info study discussed should be the only thing that is allowed, given the enormity of the topic, and that this agenda has shut out the public's ability to address us through public comment. To take an action on all encompassing topic-like future direction of the district without allowing the public to formally address us is reckless and negligent. It goes against decades of practice where this board is always allowed for public comment prior to taking any formal action. So I'd make a motion to accept the agenda with the modification of removing action from Item Number Six.
We have a motion by Director Ray.
Second.
Second by Meek. We will vote for the motion. Director Hanson.
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you just help me understand why public comment was not allowed this evening?
Sure, I'll answer that. I think we heard the voters loud and clear in November, and the district moves in a different direction. Although they've been ignored by the minority.
I apologize. If we could bring the meeting to order, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Due to the meeting last Monday and numerous emails, we have had plenty of public comment on this issue, both for and against, and per policy BEDH, the words typically apply. So we typically have public comment, but BEDH does not require public comment. Thank you. Any other questions before we vote the motion? Director Meek.
I think it's more of a comment. Since I've been on the board, I don't believe we've ever had an agenda with an action item where we did not allow public comment. So I'm just curious why you feel this topic has urgency and rises to the level of breaking past precedents since I've been on the board.
Yeah, asked and answered. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote the motion, starting with Director Hanson.
Aye.
Hanson, aye. Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
No.
Peterson, no. Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
No.
Weiniger?
No.
Defeated on a vote of three to four. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
I motion to accept the agenda.
We have a motion by Myers.
Seconded.
Seconded by Weiniger. We'll now call the roll. Hanson?
No.
Meek?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Peterson, aye. Ray?
No, because it's a travesty to shut out public comment tonight.
Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we will move into Item Number Four, the Dialogue Section. We had a pretty long meeting on Monday night that the three members here noticed, and the reason they noticed it is there were three members present. I was disappointed by what happened on Monday. Instead of prioritizing students, as the community mandated, the minority engaged in what seemed to be a publicity stunt to bully parents, students, and staff. Through this meeting, the minority board members were attempting to cancel the vote from November. I am disturbed that the remaining board members seem to prioritize winning political points and special interest politics over establishing district unity. Let's talk about collusion and secret coordination for just a minute. I received a corral request for some very specific documents relating to my discussion with the superintendent prior to the Monday meeting, which means that there's obviously coordination and leaking of that plan. If Directors Ray, Hanson, and Meek were truly concerned about educational equity, they would address the over twenty, or excuse me, seventy-five percent of Hispanic or Latino students who are not proficient in math according to the 2021 C-Math scores. This is unacceptable. If Directors Ray and the other minority members truly wanted to fix educational inequities, they would prioritize over sixty percent of our Black students who are not proficient in reading. Also unacceptable. The union itself has claimed that it needs a seat at the table, and when you hear that term, "seat at the table," what they're talking about is a collective bargaining agreement. It's parents who deserve a seat at the table. It's students who deserve a voice, and our community deserves better. While there were parents who were expecting to go to work, the other day, across the district, they were wondering how to get access to childcare for their kids. The union was saying during their Zoom call, "We are trying to gain power back, aren't we? We have to create a hardship." That could have been the opening lines to the meeting that you had. Regarding the significant accusations made by other directors, I'd like to address some of the specific statements that were made on Monday. There was complete compliance with open meeting requirements and the Sunshine laws. When one director meets with another director, whether it's text, in person, by phone, or other means, even if they are discussing school business, that is not a violation. When one director or two directors are meeting with an individual, or they are meeting with a group of people in the public, that does not need to be noticed and is not a violation. Director Williams and I wanted to convey our independent concerns of directors, discuss all contact contract options available, and allow the superintendent to consider how he wanted things to proceed before joint board action was decided or taken. This was the ethical thing to do regarding an employment contract, and we stand by the way we handled it. We notified Directors Hanson, Ray, and Meek of the conversation and that we were waiting on the superintendent's feedback before moving forward as a board to determine the next steps. No action was taken until action might be taken later tonight. On Monday, the minority short-circuited what was meant to be an ongoing discussion and processed through their actions before additional discussions, both individual and public, could occur. Had the superintendent wanted to resign, the director desires to move in a different direction would have been cited as part of the public message. There are still questions that this community has about what happened when Thomas Tucker left. Part of the accusations leveled that the new directors are attempting to create instability. Having unilateral press conferences to malign other directors, followed by union coordination for a sick-out, is irresponsible. This does not show respect for our students or for our teachers. Some directors up here are very fond of citing policy, so let me cite one, GP 1.8 Board Code of Conduct. Members must have loyalty to the entire ownership, unconflicted by loyalties to staff, other organizations, including interests or advocacy groups. I can think of no stronger example of an interest group than the labor union, and not just the local labor union, the state labor union. Make no mistake, it's about process. This isn't about process and open meeting laws or board policy. This is about a minority of directors and a local and state labor union not accepting the results of an election and the will of over 120,000 voters. This is about parents' rights, their voice in education, and how we will ensure our kids will be ready for their future. Now, that being said, believe it or not, there is common ground that this board can reclaim tonight. We came together on the CU South Purchase because we know it's the right thing to do for our kids, whether it's career technical education, continuing education credits, and those will also be extended to our students with special needs. I applaud that decision by this board, and there were many folks out in the community that frankly did not support that decision, but we got to a good 7-0 decision, I believe. There are incredible people in this cabinet seated here before you tonight, and they've done some incredible work. I see it every day. When I've come in, I see this cabinet working hard. I see them working diligently, and I see them constantly trying to promote the interests of our students, teachers, and staff. I believe we have the best teachers, best leadership, and staff in the whole state, and whatever happens here tonight will not change that. I believe all directors, I hope, support the update to the compensation plans that were devised by Ms. Cattasca and Ms. Thompson. They've worked very hard for a very long time to try to get our teachers what they need in compensation. I personally support these plans because the teachers need to support these plans, and I can separate the actions of the union from all our teachers. We need to take care of our teachers. When selected, we selected a knowledgeable, balanced, and proven chair the other week for the Mill Bond Exploratory Committee so they can help us identify critical needs for the district, and may include funding the, which may include funding the compensation plan and the neighborhood schools. The last neighborhood school in this district was built over a decade ago, and if we cannot come together as a board and stop some of the things that have been going on, we are never going to come together for the community. So that means stopping the parliamentary and procedural obstruction and things that have been going on since we're elected. On my part, I will own we need to have better communication with all board members. I need to communicate more often. I need to communicate earlier, and we need to do more communication in public, and we can start that next week with moving forward, and I will own that. But we need to find a way to come together because if we do not come together, we will have a lot of problems for ourselves for years to come, at least another two years, and we will have problems for this district. And people are out there, they're freaking out. I've heard the comments. I've read a ton for. I've read a ton against, and the only way we're going to do this is to stand down a little bit and come together for the community. With that, I finish the statement, and at this point, I need to stop talking. We need to hear from all our other directors. Thank you. Director Williams.
So first, I want to make very clear, I followed the law to the letter. Because we are a local board, Sunshine laws are that two of us can be together at any time without calling a public meeting. At no time was I with more than one other director at any given moment. My phone calls were only between myself and one other at a time. Having said that, President Peterson and I did meet with the superintendent a week ago today. After having separate phone conversations with the other majority members, I felt it would be kind and compassionate to have a conversation about our concerns privately. We were not secretive, and in fact, we intentionally conveyed our conversation with Mr. Wise to the other board members one-on-one. I was truly trying to give the superintendent the opportunity to look at the options and have time to think about it. It would not be thoughtful or kind to surprise him from the dais, considering his whole career has been in Douglas County. President Peterson and I did meet with legal counsel the night before to go over our conversation and make sure we weren't breaking policy or law. Legal counsel assured us that we were not.
Other directors? Director Weiniger.
To the Douglas County parents, teachers, and community, I understand how emotionally frustrating this must be. Our teachers deserve a workplace, and our students deserve classrooms where they can thrive and do what they love to do, which is teach and learn without disruption. Our parents deserve consistency within the schools they are entrusting their children to every day. As a working mom who grew up in Douglas County, I was disheartened this week over the attempt at chaos the union and some leadership encouraged among our community. I can promise you, decisions I and most others on this board made before and going forward are decisions that encourage a vision of peace and success for our teachers, for our parents, and most importantly, for our kids.
Director Myers.
Good evening. The reason I sit here as one of the newly-elected board members is because the community wanted the education of their children to be led in a different direction. I ran on integrity, transparency, and accountability, and because I'm a former teacher, my daughter is a teacher.
Excuse me, Director Myers. This is not public comment. We're not doing laughing, applauding, waving signs to block people. Audience, please be quiet while the board's conducting business. This, please, audience, is the first warning. Thank you. Go ahead, Director Myers.
Because I'm a former teacher, my daughter is a teacher, we believe in the power of teachers to change lives. Leadership that allows the closing of schools, mask on children, and removes the freedom of parents to choose what is best for their child is not truly leadership that values teachers or kids. Douglas County could have led this state and this nation academically if the district had prioritized our children over special interests. There were school districts in this state and across this country that kept their students in school, and there were even schools within this district that chose to have in-person learning. The voters elected us to change the direction of this district, and I take this responsibility seriously. Monday's night's media stunt, this staged show, was used to accuse and discredit me and the other new board members. What you did was unethical and unacceptable. To falsely accuse me and other board members of breaking the law is lying, and it is wrong. I do not believe that was the way to show community that we can work together, and it has eroded our community confidence in our and your leadership. In fact, this negative circus act will have an irrevocable effect on our community, teachers, and students, which will take time to reverse. This is not the way to build trust and put our kids first. I'm appalled at a labor union that encourages teachers to participate in a sick-out day. Our students are already behind from missing so much school due to COVID and weather, clearly, clearly. The union does not value teachers nor put kids first. I ran on compensating teachers and making their jobs easier and more rewarding. I'm afraid that the four new board members are going to have to get on their knees and beg our voters to pass a mill levy to pay teachers and a bond to build schools, and I don't know if that will be successful after the chaos caused by the events of this week. Parents, I know you're angry, conflicted, and you just want your kids to be educated. I'm sorry. Change is difficult, and right now, your children are suffering. Yes, it is time to end this chaos and the bickering. Teachers, teachers, I know you're tired. I know you're weary, and you're frightened that this new board isn't going to support you, but I'm here to tell you that we care about our teachers, and I care about you deeply. You are my people, and I will support and fight for you always. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Myers. Other directors? Director Meek?
Thank you for calling the special meeting. So what I've heard is we all agree that a meeting was held with Superintendent Wise last Friday morning without knowledge of three other board members, knowing Knowing that that meeting and conversation was going to happen, that an ultimatum was given to that superintend...
Go ahead.
Yeah. We wouldn't be sitting here tonight if an ultimatum was not provided with an agenda item to carry through with that ultimatum. I think that's clear evidence that an ultimatum was provided to the superintendent. So that conversation happened without the knowledge of three board members sitting here tonight. Let me explain why I think that was illegal and a violation of the open meeting law. So Colorado Open Meeting Law is more than just about a number of people talking together. It is about a public governing board making decisions out of the public's eye. When you told Superintendent Wise that he needed to either resign or retire effective that week, or other action would be taken, that is a decision that was made without the board having a conversation. So that is how I have interpreted the violation of a Colorado Open Meeting Law. And that's pretty significant and egregious to me. So some questions that I've received, why have you taken action on this in the way that we did? These kinds of unauthorized actions by the board president need to stop immediately. And we already have brought this concern to the board through other prior unilateral actions that have been taken, and yet, it still continues. And we, as a board, I have been pleading for us to work together, all seven of us as a board. I asked us to have a retreat, I encouraged us to come together. The retreat was to talk about the vision of the district. The retreat was to talk about how we would work together as a team, the direction of the district, the very reason that you gave the superintendent his excuse for needing to go in a different direction. That's the board's job, that's our job. We were elected to determine. There is a board majority that can clearly make the direction whatever they want to make it, just do it in the public, follow the law. That is what we are asking. Why didn't we include the other board directors? Well, we gave public notice, 24 hours was provided, the board president received it, I believe it said, "Please share with all the board members." No one reached out and said, "Hey, let us be included." So it wasn't secret. I don't know how we can come together as a board unless we commit to do our work in public, not to be deceitful, not to make decisions and try to move things forward without including everyone. You all have the votes to do what you want to do, have the integrity and the honesty to come together and make those decisions publicly. Our public deserves that.
To respond, no laws were broken, nothing was unethical. I initiated a conversation with Cory because I wanted to address some concerns I had. Since then, the actions that I've seen from the board minority have demonstrated that Cory may not be trusted to execute the priorities of our communities in the best interest of our students. There was no, "You will resign," there was no direction to resign. There was a discussion of all the options available in his contract, including his ability to terminate it, to terminate unilaterally from this board, to terminate from cause, everything was covered. There was a conversation about what are your plans, when do you plan to move on, what are you thinking? And then there was an idea that you could resign, you may want to consider that. That absolutely was discussed, to say, "This is where I am, this is where another director is, but we are looking for your input." There was not a, there was an ask to come back with a thoughtful consideration of what he wanted to do, and then, it will not be, "Or you will be terminated." The answer was, "Or the process will move forward as a board." And we called the other members, and we informed them of that conversation, there was nothing secretive, we told you exactly what happened in that conversation, and you even asked, "Okay, Mike, is there a timeline on this?" I said, "Yes, we're waiting for the superintendent to come back and stay on Tuesday night and tell us what he wants." And then, you said, "Then what happens?" And I believe, I said, "Then we will move forward as a board." Then we will, but we didn't get to have that discussion. We didn't get to start with a proper employee, employer discussion about their future, which by the way, you should not have those out in the public. And then, we were to move forward through this process, all board members were aware, and then on Monday, this process came to an absolute screeching halt when we had the media, when we had coordinated union action, and we had a bunch of statements which frankly eroded a ton of trust and short-circuited that process for us to move forward as a board. No two directors, no three directors can make a decision in private. It takes a board coming together as seven and then a vote. But we didn't get to have that, and we didn't frankly get to consider the role and desires of our superintendent come Monday.
So I would like to ask why we didn't discuss this at the Tuesday night board meeting that we had on the 25th. So I can play the recording of our conversation, or I can read from the transcript, which would you prefer?
Either one.
So in your conversation, you said, "Over the last couple of weeks, the individual directors have reached out to me and said, 'Well, we're concerned about the ultimate direction of the district.'" So I'm asking you, on that Tuesday night, January 25th, why would we not do it the correct way like you indicated? Why would we not have an executive session behind closed doors to talk about personnel issues? What transpired after Tuesday evening to force this conversation among four board directors to push this forward so quickly without including the rest of the board?
This wasn't a quick push, this was supposed to be a slow conversation over time that started on Friday. It only became very quick come Monday.
So it, why would you not have the conversation with the full board on Tuesday night when we were all together? That is my question. Why do you choose to do it in a way that is deceitful and not including the entire seven-member elected board?
There was no deceit, it would have been deceitful to have that conversation and not tell you. That would have been deceitful, to have that conversation and not indicate where things were going to go in the future to come together, to talk about it. We probably would be in executive session on that Wednesday, or frankly, today, had the process been allowed to continue. Director Hanson, do you want, Ms. Myers? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Director Ray.
So what a gross mischaracterization of at least the conversation I had with Director Williams to say it was just, "We're opening a conversation to ask the superintendent how to proceed." And again, if you'd like for us to play the recording of our conversation and let the public decide what was said, I'd be more than glad to provide that as well, but, but here's an example. I specifically asked Director Williams, "So, you're asking him to resign by Wednesday, otherwise, you are moving forward with termination, is that correct?" Her response, "Exactly that." Doesn't sound to me like a conversation that says, "Gee, Superintendent Wise, we have some concerns, and we'd like you to think about what your next step might be." I also want to address this whole accusation that there's coordination with the union. I would challenge you to find any ounce of evidence to back that statement up. I, I will tell you too, Director Peterson, when you refer to "the" union as if they're robbers and thieves and the bad guys, you're talking about thousands of our teachers that are members of that union. And Director Myers, you sit here and you emotionally say, "You're my peeps." But Director Myers, you were a member of the Douglas County Federation when you were a teacher. So don't tell me that you are upset with the union getting involved. So I just want to correct some gross misstatements, because the characterization of the conversation that you and Director Williams had with Superintendent Wise certainly wasn't the characterization that I got from Director Williams, nor was it, to me, an appropriate way to say, "Well, we were following guidelines," when the four of you are colluding to send this message. I mean, it's, it's, you can sit there and throw out all the legalistic language that, "Well, we talked to only one other person." But when you coordinate four directors, the judge isn't going to see that that's supporting open meetings law where this conversation is supposed to happen in public. So in your words, I take umbrage to the accusation that this wasn't a coordinated effort of three or more board directors, and I take umbrage that you feel like that our Monday meeting was a media stunt, it was transparency, it was what we do as elected officials, we are to show our community that we can do this work in public. Absolutely correct. If we have performance issues, we give Superintendent Wise the opportunity to hear those in public or to go in an executive session. But when you approach him and you say, as Director Williams said, "We have four strong members who are ready to replace you as the next super, as the superintendent in our district," that nullifies any kind of conversation that even Superintendent Wise can have with us. So I just want to reiterate that I absolutely agree that we do need to work on working together. And I was pleased that you did call the meeting, even though it was called incorrectly. I was pleased that you did that so we could have this conversation. But as Director Meek pointed out, we should have had this conversation on Tuesday. Director Williams told me you were having these concerns before even Tuesday night. Really? We certainly weren't informed of that. Was, was Mr. Wise informed of that? That's how you treat employees with integrity, is if you have a performance concern, talk to them. Don't blind sign them with, "Oh, by the way, not only do we have performance concerns, but we think you should retire, resign, or we will, we will move forward with terminating your contract." How does that even hint of due process and treating our employees with respect? So those are some opening remarks. I don't have this lovely script to write, to read out loud, but those are my some initial responses to your statements.
Okay, I disagree with those recording, or the relating of the events, Director Hanson.
I think that I'd like to just try and set the emotion aside. I understand this is an incredibly charged topic, but I think there's incredible benefit in sorting this out if we can go back to the facts, just to start this conversation and frame it. The first question I need to ask is if the four directors who took this action are aware of the legal concept of constructive discharge. Yes or no? I'll take that as a no.
No.
So constructive discharge is essentially when an ultimatum is given, resign or be fired. Ironically, the case that established this vast case law in Colorado is a teacher. When a principal sat down with her and said, "You need, your contract will not be renewed next year, would you like to resign?" The courts determined that that was a termination. This is exactly the action you took on Friday, and you can say it was starting a conversation, you can say now, in hindsight, that you just wanted to give Cory the courtesy of having this, this emotional issue in privacy. It does not matter what your intent was, what matters is the action, and the action is a constructive discharge. So we need to take that and look at that, and we can't look at that in isolation. That is board action. And when you only address the number of board directors who are present during a conversation, you're conflating open meeting laws. The, the purpose of open meeting laws is to require access to the public when public decisions are being made, when actions are being taken that are going to impact our public. And I said this on Monday night, and I can't say it enough, changing the direction of our district, changing our leader for the largest employer in Douglas County and impacting nearly 400,000 residents of Douglas County, their educational opportunities, their property values, you took formal action, whether there were two of you there, or whether the four of you had conversations, because you took it upon yourself to constructively discharge, to fire our superintendent without having a public meeting. And I don't know, I, I will be very honest with you, there are recordings of the conversations. You cannot backtrack at this point and say you were having a casual conversation to, just to meet with Cory for coffee and see what his retirement plans are. This gravely concerns me. We have significant exposure legally as a district right now, and you have an opportunity to say, "I wasn't aware of this, I made a mistake, I tried to do what I thought was right, I've learned now that it wasn't, and we can walk this back." You can undo everything that has happened, but if you choose to dig your heels in right now, you are choosing to dig your heels into sinking this ship.
Thank you, I disagree with your constructive discharge. There was not a ultimatum of retire now or else you will be fired.
So can you help me understand when Kristi Williams told David Ray that we have a strong four who are prepared to move forward? We hope this is not the direction it goes, but we wanted to tell him, Cory, the direction we are going. We are going to go in a different direction with leadership. That doesn't seem like a conversation to me.
What I actually said to Superintendent Wise was that, yes, we have a strong four, and we are prepared to move forward.
Very good, thank you, that answers all of my questions.
Other board members. If we'll have the security folks address the folks in the back of the room, please. Go ahead, Director Meek.
Could we please have a discussion about whether you feel like all seven board members should be discussing this kind of topic together, and why it just didn't happen Tuesday night? I guess I'm just having a very hard time understanding to make a decision of this gravity, to change, I mean, to change the direction of our leadership without having all seven people, what happened? What happened from Tuesday night, where there was no conversation, to Friday, well, meeting with an attorney without us and others being involved Thursday night, and then meeting with the superintendent Friday morning?
Maybe, and I'm, I'm sorry if...
Director Myers?
Sorry. I'm sorry if I'm going in the wrong direction, if I'm going to be incorrect with the questions that I ask, but maybe I might like to clarify some mishap in all of this miscommunication. Thursday night, when Sandy sent out, we get a glance, I happened to see that Mr. Wise was taking PTO starting Friday afternoon through Tuesday. Was there any board member that was aware that Mr. Wise was taking PTO? Thank you, Director Ray, I did not, I did not know that was happening.
It was in our leadership memo that Director Wise sends us on a weekly basis, thank you.
Okay, I did read through that, I probably just didn't catch it. But the one thing that I would like to ask Mr. Wise, so they had set up a meeting for you at what time, on Friday, previously?
Thursday afternoon. Mike Peterson called Kelly to set up, Kelly Duvall to set up a meeting. At that time, Kelly asked if we could meet in the morning, and it was not available to meet in the morning with Mr. Peterson. Shortly after that, in the afternoon, I got a text from Mr. Shortly after that, in the afternoon, I got a text from Mr. Peterson and Christie Williams to see if I can meet, first saying tomorrow morning before I left Friday morning, and would love to meet in person. And so that's, it was Friday or Thursday afternoon, in which it was called to Kelly Duvall, and then a text to me.
So it was a 7 o'clock, 7:00 AM meeting, correct? So my, and I'm just trying to clarify and make sure that we understand why the conversation did not happen with the three board members before Mr. Wise. Because of that meeting at 7:00, I believe, I understand that President Peterson and Vice President Christie, Vice President Williams, had every intention of contacting Director Meek, Director Hanson, and Director Ray, and that timetable is the one piece that kind of threw a wrench in everything. Am I wrong?
That's, that's not answering the question.
I'll just, I'll just step up and, I'll step up and own this. We had the meeting. I should have contacted the other directors prior, but we did contact, conduct, contact them immediately after.
That's not my question.
What's your question, then?
Why didn't we discuss it during our board meeting on January 25th, when all of us were together?
Actually, the reason that we never probably discussed it that night, I never thought of it that night. I did not know it was something that I was thinking of going forward with.
So on Tuesday, you had no idea you wanted to terminate Cory, and on Friday, or on Thursday at 2:00 PM, I got a text from Mike saying we needed to have an urgent conversation about the district? In 36 hours, we made a decision to terminate a superintendent?
Correct.
All right. But why? Because there was PTO happening? I, I'm just confused, and I'm trying to understand what has caused this decision to happen in the timeframe that it happened?
Yeah. Again, I don't think there has been a decision made on this. There was directors that have contacted me individually and expressed some grave concerns. When I had more than one director contact me, I contacted Director Williams and said we should express these concerns and talk to the superintendent, and then figure out where we're going to go. And that is the attempt, and that's what we intended to do on Friday.
So again, you've said it transpired for weeks. You've been having conversations with concerns. Why did we not, as a seven-member board, when we were all together, where we could do it legally and have a conversation, why did we not choose to discuss the personnel issue on January 25th? Why?
I don't have an answer for the 25th, but I have an answer now because this was thrown off the rails by Monday.
I just want to make note on the record that the conversation you had with Cory on Friday morning, he was informed that you had grounds to terminate him. So whatever has occurred between Friday and now is, is an isolated and a separate instance because when you made the decision to terminate him on Friday, only the information up until that point can be looked at, and there, there's just kind of a cutoff because once you tell somebody we have grounds to terminate you for cause, you're kind of stuck with what you relied on up until that point.
We talked about all the options in this contract, both unilateral termination on both sides and including termination for cause. We talked about everything that was in the contract and what could be done. So do we need to move to executive session and move on to have some frank conversations?
So I guess my one burning question, are we, as a seven-member board, willing to commit to talk to all seven of us to make public decisions moving forward? Because we can't change what's happened in the past. We can't change four board members feeling like they had the authority to tell the superintendent what they told the superintendent, which sure sounded like a decision had been made, which to me feels like it's a violation of open meeting law, and it's because all seven board members were not talking about it together. And I see no way for the community to come together if we are not willing to be honest with each other, talk with each other, follow the law, and work like a board is supposed to work. Can't change the past, but can we have a commitment moving forward that we will operate that way?
Okay, so yes, I, we can commit to that, and I followed the law.
Go ahead, Director Ray.
I'm, I'm confused with your earlier suggestion that we move into executive session, so I would appreciate more clarity in terms of what the purpose of that would be at this point, but I also would echo with Director Meek is that we need to maintain transparency, integrity to our public, and for us to shuffle ourselves behind closed doors doesn't feel like that we're doing that. My question, Director Peterson, is what would be the purpose of moving us into executive session?
The purpose would be to have some personnel discussions and performance discussions about Superintendent Wise that I thought that he may not want to have in the public, but we can have those in the public if we don't move into executive session.
And by law, have you given Superintendent Wise the notification that you would like to discuss his performance, and has he been given the option as law requires to have that conversation in public?
Absolutely.
And could I get a confirmation from Superintendent Wise? Superintendent Wise, are you wanting us to have this discussion in executive session versus having this discussion in the public?
So as I work with the law, I believe I have, even tonight during this meeting, made that decision. I was given an email to ask, what would I like on that side? So there was an email stating to Ms. Klemes, Legal Klemes, and myself if I had liked to have executive session or be, have this continue in, in public.
I'm sorry, Director, and Superintendent Wise, I, what is your decision?
I'd like to be in public. Let's keep going.
Public, thank you.
Other directors.
May I add on that?
Go ahead, Superintendent.
You know, as we look at Douglas County School District, and what's best for each one of our kids and our families, the one thing I want us to always think about is modeling. We need to model the vision. We do inspire the vision, and we need to create a shared vision. Part of the contract goes into having these discussions. I believe we have been doing a phenomenal job leading this district, myself and our cabinet, as you alluded, our principals, our teachers, every one of our employees. I believe in this district. I believe in our people. We have an opportunity to come together, and given the opportunities to be better, I think we all will want to step up to that challenge, each one of us, including myself. And so taking on the task to say, how can we improve and be better? That's at the forefront. And I think if, leading this, I can, I can handle the conversations of how we can be better, but I'd like us all to say, how do we humbly lead and do that? So I would like to model that as we do that, and that's the why behind it also.
Okay, other directors. Based on my observations of being here and prior to my time being on the board, I think trust is essential for any employee, employer relationship, and I have concerns, frankly, about the superintendent and his ability to make decisions for our children in, in the best interest of the students and staff. That is how I was moving towards the decision around the superintendent, because we need to have trust, not just between the superintendent and some members of the board, but we need to have trust between the superintendent and all members of the board. I generally wanted to work with the superintendent as I came here. I thought this is something we could move in a different direction together, away from the prior years where this district was headed, and honestly, there were no campaign promises. People asked, do you want to replace the superintendent? I said, I have to see where it goes. And then when I came to my personal decision that I don't think the superintendent was able to be someone that I could work with, due to the influence of, frankly, the minority board coming through multiple ways, then I wanted to initiate the, the conversation about where we can go, what's next, and I frankly was intending to do a solid, to do courtesy to the superintendent by giving him a voice in that conversation. And even though this is all transpired between last week and Monday, I personally have lost trust in the superintendent, and I don't know if I can get that back. So that's where I stand. Other directors. Director Ray.
Just a, just a follow-up. You've said a lot of very abstract kinds of things, like, I don't think I can trust, I don't think I can work with, but you've given no specifics. How did, how was trust broken? Why is it that you feel like you cannot work with a superintendent that's given his life to this district for the past 26 years? Help me understand specific concerns as opposed to these just general things.
Sure. First of all, I know that Cory Wise is someone who likes to make connections. I know through various emails that he has a great following amongst students, teachers, principals, but when I look at a district of 8,500 employees, when I look at the largest employer in Douglas County, and I look at communications, planning, delegation, reaction, I don't see someone who potentially is capable of moving this district in the direction it wants to go. My greatest concern is the change in direction of this district, the change to put the parent voice back in charge, to ensure that we're focusing on academics and not activism, to ensure that financial obligations to this district and where we go to close the compensation actually happens. And what I've seen is, frankly, communications, planning, and decision-making was lacking. When I saw the masks and the COVID situation happen, I didn't see Cory Wise. I saw the minority of the board. When I saw the planning come out, even I, even this board, it seemed, was confused as to what was going on. When I see statements of the majority of this board, when we talk about just the resolution that was passed the other day, which clearly did not repeal the equity, educational equity policy, where it clearly did not alter that policy, yet the minority here continued to say it did, and then instead of clarifying for us to staff, the superintendent said, I was surprised it wasn't repealed. We need support from the superintendent for board positions on which we've voted. We need support from the superintendent on, excuse me, majority opinions, and most of all, we need that transparency back and forth, and I was not seeing that. Okay, Director Meek.
Typically, wouldn't you give that feedback to an employee, provide expectations, and then allow the employee to fulfill that and give them an opportunity? I mean, I think that's how employment usually is supposed to work, and I don't remember us as a board giving him that feedback. And, and I know it's really confusing because it's seven different individuals, but I can, I can give the superintendent feedback, you can give him feedback, Director Ray can give him feedback. It doesn't matter what individuals are saying to the superintendent. Direction to the superintendent is through the board. The board provides direction. There's one voice, and I'm just one member on this board, but I've had no conversations where we have given the superintendent direction.
Yeah, I don't think we can direct the superintendent to do things, but in terms of performance, putting someone on a performance plan to say, you're not quite there yet, you need extra training, you need to go back and look at all these things, here's a get well plan. You don't do that with CEOs. Either they come into the job equipped to handle what's coming up, ready to go, lead decisively, communicate effectively, and, and not relying on the other staff, or you don't. When CEOs fail to perform, you replace the CEO, and this probably goes back to, so do I fault Superintendent Wise for any shortcomings I may perceive? I actually don't. I think that this started when he was selected by the previous board, after we had the resignation of Thomas Tucker, then we had another superintendent for, I think it was a day or something, and then selected Cory Wise. And I believe that selection, based on recent events that I've seen, is because Cory is a good person, he wants to please people, and, but frankly, I think he is unduly influenced by members of the board, specifically the previous president. And when this district has been chartered by the voters to move in a different direction, and there is nothing but holding that back, that's something that I take when I consider trust, and that's where I am. But I'd like to hear from some of the other majority directors rather than myself talking to the, the three that remain.
Something I think that I would like to address that apparently has put out on social media about my statement that, yes, the day after we were elected, I said, yes, I'm willing to work with Mr. Wise. I did. I feel like I gave him the chance to prove that he could lead this school, school district, and I truly meant it. Unfortunately, now, I no longer believe Mr. Wise represents what this community wants, and I've lost trust in his leadership abilities. And after yesterday, I, apparently, I believe the community has too lost some trust. I simply believe he's in over his head. I like Cory. I think he's a nice guy, but if Mr., if Mr. Wise was truly a leader, then he can reach out to the community, he can make an effort to bring together the community, talk to his cabinet in support, along with the four majority board members, and simply maybe just assure us that he is for, while he might not be in agreement with the things that we vote on, and it's a four to three all the time, pretty much. I mean, there's been a couple of incidents where we've come all together and we've made a decision, but if he could communicate to his cabinet that I believe the day after that we voted the resolutions, here's what happened. I felt that the majority board was being undermined and our intentions. We've been told that not only didn't you support our resolution around the equity policy, you told leadership that you, that we were intending to appeal it. We have repeatedly said that we will not do that. And how can we have a superintendent that's not working with the entire board? I just feel like I'm, while you may not be in agreement with us, Cory, I just want to feel that we have some value, and maybe you, maybe there's some olive leaf that you want to be with us and, and work with us, even though maybe you don't agree that we, you know, did the mask mandate, added the resolutions, and somehow, it is amazing to me that the lies, because of, I only have probably, what, 600 emails in my inbox right now, which I attempted to work on today, but maybe, understand while, yes, the 25th, they came out, the people came out, and basically somehow a lie was perpetuated that we were going to get rid of the Equity Council and the Equity Board. It was said time and time again, and it was said time and time again in the emails that I got. We've never said that. Never have we, Mr. Wise.
So if I can address, since you're making a statement of what I said, the very next day after the board meeting with our cabinet, I actually talked about what our next steps are. I said, as we're running, we talked about, and you talked about repealing it, but it didn't happen. We have the equity policy, we have a resolution. So when we look at our staff, we need to say, what can we do next? We need to involve the Equity Advisory Council. We need to involve students. We need to get more people involved. And starting that day, we talked about, what's our timeline? We have September, and we backstep it. So we talk about supporting, going back to the masks. As we started this school year, I and we, as a staff, pushed to have mass choice. We would implement masks if a PHO went in, and it did, and we did. There's times where decisions are taken out of my hands and sometimes out of your hands. As it came back, and you look at transition with masks, in days, in less than a week, we went from PHO of having universal masks to having choice. And we worked an ADA request system with our students and staff to implement immediately going into the winter break. We came back. Our numbers have been similar to other districts. It's not a matter of whether I agree or disagree, but if you look at my behaviors, you might see those actions. That's how you build credibility over time, those consistent behaviors. But we have a job to do. We will lead it and inspire it, and we're going to find the win-win. But we make strong decisions. But strong decisions don't have to be at the expense of others. It's how we connect and to get understanding. It's how we find those commonality. And I would say that we had already started to work, including with Director Weineger and President Peterson, with Matt and I, to say, "Let's backplan this. Let's set up some times and work together, two-on-two, to find out more about the equity plan, and then start to work." We've been trying to work on having two-on-one conversations, setting that up, and we haven't been able to get those scheduled with you. So I'm working hard to do that, and we will do better. But I want you to know, on some of those things, never once was it that you would repeal it again. That was not even my mindset. I don't know where that could come from. The idea even the next day with DLT, as we shared, we have the equity policy, we have the new resolution. We're going to work that forward. We're going to continue the work. We need to include others, but it's just starting. We have to go from September to now, and we have to start to organize our work, similar as we're doing as an entire district. What is our district plan? I heard a lot that night about implementation plan. Talked about that in both meetings, about having an implementation plan. So I want you to know that in many ways, I'll see areas that we can improve, but I also want to speak very clearly of supporting not only the equity policy, but the resolution, because those two are in place, and we will see those through and crosswalk those and continue that work. And I think that was a statement the next day of, "We got this, we can do this. There are going to be people that are upset on both sides. How do we connect that? How do we show that things aren't lost?" And it was more about inspiring. I think if you talked to our cabinet group, LONO, DLT as a collective, I would think you would hear very similar things.
Thank you.
Director Weineger? I'm sorry, I thought you were reaching for your thing.
So I like Corey. He has been here for 26 years, and he's been great at his job. He's had a great support group, and when we first were sworn in and we walked Wilcox, you could just feel the positive work atmosphere and that people are happy to be here and work here, and he has a great staff. Like, he is supported by great people. And so I was actually coming in being like, "Oh, maybe we can make this work." But it was hard to get past some things that happened in the beginning of the school year, especially around masks, where implementation of the mask mandate went really far. There were reports of walking halls and making sure masks are on kids, and just turning teachers into masked police and putting more on their plate, and then the weekly emails that were so long, and just putting it, kind of threatening people that they better wear that mask or else. And I just did not feel that was handled well. And then the fact that put in a lawsuit against our own health board just really made it seem like you're, not you, but I don't know, maybe some influences around you that you're choosing to listen to had you do that and make more division in our county. And the more I thought about that, the more I was like, "Well, who are you really loyal to? Where do you really stand on some things?" And when we were writing up resolutions, especially with the equity resolution, I was kind of getting frustrated that we even had to do this. I mean, I want a superintendent, I feel like, aligned with us and aligned with our community and who voted for us, and just kind of be more proactive rather than reactive. And it's not like I don't think we can continue to help you do what we envision for, or have the vision for our community, but it's just more of finding someone who better aligns and has a better direction. And I want to leave on good terms, and I wanted this to be a compassionate thing, and unfortunately, it's exploded, and maybe there were some things we could have handled better to bring in the whole board. To be frank and to be honest, it's been hard being on a board that's split with sometimes condensating tones and trying to intimidate you into things, but maybe it's because it's hard to have a frank conversation when you're having a microphone in your face. But that's where my thought process was when I finally was like, you know, I want to be able to have this actually be a board job and not a job that requires so much of me, which, you know, it will, it's worth it. I'll do it for our community, for our kids, for our teachers. But I just want to feel like the superintendent is my actual hands and feet on what I envision, and it's hard to currently feel that way. But I do appreciate everything you've done, Corey. I would never call you a bad guy. I would always give you great reference. It's just what we want with this district, I think, is a different vision.
May I just ask a few clarification points?
Go ahead, Director Hanson.
First of all, just generally, you ran to have a microphone in your face. It is not fun, and this entire process is not fun, and it doesn't make a difference whether you're on a board of seven people who agree with you, or four-three, or two-five. It's a hard job, but it's the job you signed up for. Each and every one of you signed up for this. And, you know, it's interesting. I was close at one point with one of your biggest supporters, and he frequently told me that our community can never come together with a 7-0 board because there has to be representation from both sides of the spectrum, because we are a divided community. And I actually think there's some merit to that. But I don't understand how, now that we have a split board and there are disagreements, that it's all of a sudden a bad thing. And I feel like in a lot of ways, I was supposed to check my opinions and my beliefs and my vision for this district at the door. I was elected by a majority too. I was elected by a large majority. And I don't throw that around and say, "I have some superior right because people voted for me." We have a job to do, and once we're elected, we represent the entire community, and I feel like that has been significantly lost in the last two months that you've had office. When you said you didn't understand why you had to write the resolution for the equity policy, it's your job. We write resolutions. We govern by policies. I do not understand how that can be something that you're putting forth as evidence that you would like to terminate our superintendent because. And the basis for your point that at the beginning of the year, masks, the lawsuit, those were directions from the previous board. If anything, that shows that Corey is completely willing to follow and comply with and work with the board. I agree with everything you started off by saying. Corey is great at his job. I would be a reference for him too. He has built an incredible team, and he has filled this district with positive energy. And it is our job now, as a group of seven, to come together and find that common ground and represent this divided community as a divided board. None of us have to check our opinions or our perspectives at the door. Our job, we were elected all by a majority to do this together.
So I agree, and I think everyone up here agrees that Corey is a wonderful person. I go back to the CEO criteria. I see misalignment of staff. I'm not sure who's in charge sometimes. One particular point we had lately is we had a letter that was delivered to the board the day prior to the resolution, and I asked, prior to the dais, being on the dais, and I asked again from the dais, "Superintendent Wise, did you know anything about this letter?" And he said, "No, I didn't." So either there are people out there doing things, running the district, getting ready to write massive letters to the board, which, by the way, again, inaccurate, saying, "Please don't repeal the policy," and that was not on the resolution, or he does, you know, the answer is, "If you don't know about it, why don't you know what your people are doing? If you do know about it, why aren't you sticking up for the board and saying, 'Read the resolution? This isn't what it does.'" Back to the COVID thing, not only is there just implementations, and I know we have differences on the masking issue, we always have, but with that implementation that came down in the fall, not only was it hard-handed, we had charter schools threatened with revocation of charters. We said, you know, "You're not complying." We were pushing down very aggressively, not just on parents and students, but on the charter schools themselves. And then just recently, now this is after Monday, this is after the conversation on Friday, but when you have a union threatening to have a sick-out, and the answer in email responses is, "Here's the link so you can call in sick," and there's not significant pushback on what that's doing to the students. Again, these are just some recent examples, and regardless of where we are and how we got here today and different things, the reality for me is I have now lost trust, and I don't know how I will get it back. And that saddens me because I wanted to start really by trying, really by trying to get to a better place together with this superintendent, but I can't get there now. So I've had my say. I just think that we have a minority who does not want to move on. I think it's very evident from Monday that that minority reflects a union vision for the future. I think if you let people, quote, "take hostages and pay the ransom," you're going to get a lot more hostages, and you're going to get a lot more ransom coming up from this union. And if we don't cut this connection from a majority that, in my opinion, is working through the superintendent to not move in this new direction, that has a parent voice in choice, a parent voice in curriculum, that we're going to look at this school district here come the fall, and we are going to be in a bad place, and we are going to be headed into a bad place. So that's where I am on this vote. Director Meek.
So it's really sad for our community that I keep hearing the majority views this and the minority views this, or there's loyalty to factions. There's one board. The four individuals who are the majority, you get to make the choices, period. Just follow the rules and do it the way we're supposed to do it. And I find it very ironic, I suppose, that the letter that has brought up so much attention, because to me, it feels like the letter is what that breaking point was, because we didn't talk Tuesday night during the meeting as a board about personnel issues. And so what happened? Well, this letter came in, and the letter came up in our conversation, I think it came up in multiple conversations. I don't understand why there's concern with freedom of speech from our employees. And you expected the superintendent, had he known about this, to shut it down, to stand up for the board? It's freedom of speech that I've heard you talk about over and over and over again. We are supposed to hear from every stakeholder. We're supposed to hear from students. We're supposed to hear from parents. We're supposed to hear from business owners. There's supposed to be a diversity of views. Are you saying we should be squelching those views? And we have to make the hard choice up here because there are diversity of views. We don't have a community that believes 100% one way or another way. How dare you say our superintendent should be squelching our employees from exercising their voice? We should be listening to them. We should be, we should be listening to everybody in our community. We should be having those conversations publicly. I feel like when you go behind closed doors and are trying to make decisions happen, you don't feel like you can sit up here publicly and support why you want to make that decision. If you can't support it publicly, that might be telling you it's a bad decision. So the letter, I just find it highly offensive that you don't think we should care about what our building leaders and our teachers and our students have to say to us. We're an education system. Should we just do what they say? No, but we should hear their voices. So I just feel so strongly about that, that, anyway. So incredibly offensive to hold Corey to implementing the prior board's directions is also the other thing I've heard from multiple individuals. That's his job. It's his loyalty to the board. That's why it's the board speaking that matters, and the four of you get to be that voice. So give him a chance. He's had two months, two months with this new board that has not given him direction. So it just is offensive to me on so many levels that we're sitting here today talking about taking action without even having one conversation with the individual who has dedicated his entire life to serving this community and has done that through the most difficult time in education history, and you're fine just saying, "We're going to hold it against him from what he did to serve the prior board." It's wrong.
Regarding freedom of speech, there is no attempt to squash that voice. I said he should have addressed it, not silenced it, meaning talked to their concerns and represented what was going on. Relative to other things, yeah, yeah, so, sorry, go ahead, Superintendent Wise, then Director Myers.
You know, I think in a process where there's action item, that's why you have public comments. When you look at temperature gauges, I try to be visible in our schools, be visible in our meetings. I've been at principal meetings, regional meetings, DLT meetings, and ask, "What's temperature gauge? What are the tipping points? What do you fill?" Director Vision, we've talked. So at fault, so let me say my fault. You and I have had a lot of conversations. With this, we've been trying to set up systems to have effective communication with a board that has, I would like us to build together, trying to find those two-and-ones to merge that together, and I've probably, we've probably relied on each other a lot, and it's a tough job. It's tough as a board because you can't come together a lot. But when it comes to an action item and voice, you know, one of the things you say to lead it, and you and I had this conversation of, if I knew about it, that's bad, but if you don't know about it, it's bad. So what do you do? One of the things, as I start to say, how do you address it? I think first you wait to see what action is. I haven't spoken, you haven't seen me put out a media release. I'm going to carry my actions forward, but once an action is taken, that's when I start to work with our staff and our people, and you listen to all the voices within it. So I'd almost say to you, I want to say this in this process, evaluate me moving forward on this action, because in the process, there wasn't action taken. So for me to go listen first, what am I listening for because we haven't had action yet? So I just want to say in that process of how we go through this, you know, I hear you on, if these things are taking place and I knew about it or I'm leading it, which was not the case when you asked that, but if I don't know about it, that is a part of a voice. We do need to hear it, and then we need to say, "Okay, what are we hearing about it? And then what are the actions that are taken, and how do we move that forward?" So I just, you know, when you look at those things, I think the real evaluation of that is moving forward versus where we up to that point.
Thank you. Director Myers.
So I'm assuming that our community and our teachers and those that are watching us on YouTube, so I want to be transparent, and I want to ask some questions that I truly do not know the answer to. I stepped in, sworn in November 29th, and do I know everything about DAC? Do I know everything about SAG? No, absolutely not. And my first meeting with- And my first meeting with Director Ray with SAG, I pretty much, I said that, didn't I, Director Ray? That I just didn't know everything going on, so I was there to learn about the SAG. So one of the questions that I want to ask, and I truly don't know about this. Is it the job of the board to micromanage the superintendent? Mr. Wise, at any time, do you ever feel like anyone on this board has micromanaged you and made decisions for you and told you to write things certain ways or whatever? Do you know what I mean? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I understand what you're asking. You know, I think it's a fine line when you look at boards. So I've had the opportunity to work with now two boards. This current one for about six weeks. So I think when you start looking at actions, I've been asked that a couple of times about micromanagement. You know, I think at times when there's chaos, and COVID has created chaos. COVID has created federal, state, and even local changes instantaneously. Updates from CDC that surprises CDPE and your local health departments. They're adjusting on spot and are inaccurate and unable to perform. So when you say the micromanagement, I think all of us have a tendency to jump with micromanagement when there's not as much clarity. So have I seen it and filled it at times? Absolutely. So I think on that same token, that's where the idea of how do we create retreats? What are our ends? What are our actions? What are those executions? I think the clarity of expectation, and we started to get that a little bit onboarding, is, is critical.
And then one other question. So the work session that we had, gosh, January 25th, was it? The, it was a work session, no, 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 I'm sorry. It was back before that, we had a work session where we sat out here. And you gave, we had some great reports from cabinet members. It was actually, in my opinion, a pretty awesome meeting. I just, I loved hearing the reports about everything from finance to whatever. Till Mr. Wise, you gave the COVID report. I thought it was great. I mean, I thought, okay, wow, you know, we're working on it. We're going to get this COVID stuff done. And after that, it continued to spiral downward through, I'm going to say, board members. To the point that it was, you had to repeat yourself several times and clarify to these board members that our numbers were looking just as good as around us, if not better. And we're masked, we're unmasked and they're masked. Do you remember that just completely? I don't know how many times you had to repeat to the board members, to certain board members that were talking about the breaking point of teachers, sustainability. And I honestly felt that that meeting just did a complete spiral down. So my question, after all that, my question. Is there a point, and I don't know if it's President Peterson's job, and I don't know if it's your job, could that conversation just have ceased? Because sometimes I feel like it is on and on and on, and we are disrespectful of time of our cabinet members that are here, our people that are here running the tech, Sandy that's probably on the whole time, correct? So whose job is it to get these meetings to where, and that was a work session, which I think is almost a little bit different from a board meeting? Am I, am I wrong in that?
So study sessions are for the dialogue. So it allows us to be less foremost, not just a presentation. We try to give you information ahead of time, also information there, and then that dialogue create deeper understanding. My question back to you is, are you evaluating the performance of the board or the performance of me? Because my control sounds like we did a good job. I don't think it's my job to evaluate the board. I think it's yours and our job to evaluate the effectiveness of the board. And I think that's what I've been trying to build and express and even say at times to not take sides, to build all of you, to hear different viewpoints. Even the last meeting, I hear different viewpoints. What do I hear in common? So I'm trying to help coach, but I do not feel that's my job to evaluate you. But I'm also trying to steer and help on that.
Okay, so, and so basically, I was kind of asking you that, who would control that conversation? Because am I correct in saying that you did have to repeat as if we weren't hearing? You had to repeat several times about the data concerning around. And so my question was, I felt that there was a repetitive, after repetitive statements from board members to the point that, I get it? We've.
Yeah, so I would say most boards and with their superintendent, we try to create retreats. After election, our goal is to try to create a retreat right away, onboarding right away. We're even trying to create one now. The retreat, even where you bring in outside facilitation, it's hard work to be a board. When you don't have times to pull together, then more than just in two, or it's an open meeting, when you have three or more, it's hard to come together in alignment. To, to be a good board, just like to be a good team, takes time. And to have a retreat, to have a purpose, to bring in the structure and the PD or the facilitation to help you and help us be at our best. I do believe that's something we're still needing. I think that'll help all of us, including myself, be more effective and better, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Director Ray. So a couple of things I want to lead off with. First of all, who is our community? And I've heard us reference communities several times tonight. And to the point of this is what the community wants. So from that definition, that community is the 25, 30% of the voters who voted. And the majority of those voters are your community that you feel like you need to respond to. To me, community is much more than that. I think Director Meek kind of alluded to that, Director Hanson. All of us were voted in with a majority of community members voting us in. They didn't vote for an agenda. They voted for people that would represent the community. And so I want us to be careful right off the get go here that when we talk about community, it's not about the 60,000 that voted you. It's also about the 60,000 that voted me twice into these, into this position. So community is much broader than just the people who elected you. And it's, the direction of the district doesn't come from that. It comes from us working together. The other thing I want to address, Director Peterson, as you said, the minority just doesn't want to move on. I find that offensive. I know you're a commander in the military and assume that people kind of fall in line with your command, but that's, that's not how we operate here. You're not the commander. You are equally voted into this position as any of us. And so when you say the minority doesn't want to move on, that's dreadful in my mind because you need us. You need us to represent those 50 some thousand people that did not vote for you. You need us to do that, to speak up, so that we're making good decisions for the entire community, not just the 25 to 30% of the community of which 56% of that 30% voted for you to be in this position. So I just want to emphasize that point. I also want to thank you, though, because you've given some specifics of your concerns, and that's exactly what we've needed to get to. And I want to just talk about those a little bit. And I think we talked a lot about this notion of, you said, misalignment of staff. The concern that Mr. Wise didn't know about this letter that came from the principals. And then you back, you kind of walked it back and said, but, but you know what? We want to hear from everybody, but we just want Superintendent Wise to address it. So I do want to remind you that we have an active resolution that talks about intimidation, that no staff member should ever feel intimidated to come directly to the board to address their concerns. They don't have to go through their commanding officer or their supervisor before they come and talk with us. It's, it's okay for them to talk to the board because those are people that we also have to listen to as well. So, so to lay that on the shoulders of Mr. Wise to say, well, you should have known, or you should have addressed, or, or whatever you wanted him to do with that letter, to me is, again, not sufficient to be able to say that's a performance concern. The other performance concern you raised was that there was a lie perpetuated about dismantling the Equity Advisory Council. Evidence, please. What we all know is supervisors, it supervises people. If you're going to make an accusation, provide your evidence, provide your data. There's not one principal in this room that would walk into and tell a teacher, I have concerns, just because I feel like you're undermining me. That principal knows that if we're going to have concerns, you better have evidence to back it up and show that person what is the evidence you have regarding that. You talked about the response to the sick out, that the superintendent just shared a link and said, here's the link if you want to call in absent, was the only response. Evidence, please. I have not seen that. Director Myers, you asked a valid question. Do we micromanage the superintendent? Well, I would encourage you to read that Board of Education handbook because it clearly tells you how we govern. We govern through policy and resolution. That's how we govern. And so when you look at that and become trained in what your role is, it makes this a heck of a lot easier than jumping to a conclusion that says the superintendent must be undermining us. Well, every resolution and every policy adjustment we've made, he's carried out to the letter of the law. That's what the superintendent has done. And for us to evaluate the superintendent's performance, for all of you to evaluate his performance before, whatever took place before you came on, is also unacceptable. As a supervisor, I'm not going to say to a teacher, you know what? The way you handled this at this other school before I hired you was unacceptable. So now I'm going to call you out on it. That's not how you provide feedback to your employee. If you have issues with your employee while you were in the supervisor role, by all means, communicate those. But to hold him accountable for things that happened in the past is, is unethical. He can't respond to that. He can't undo those things. So I guess I want to say, first of all, I appreciate this conversation because for, because we're just beginning to hear some very specific things that you're concerned about. But I hope we can also talk about the validity of those concerns because so far, what it seems to me, it's about our behavior. It's not about Superintendent Wise. He's carrying out everything that we're asking him to do. You know, the masking policy that I know Director Weiniger is so passionate about, he carried out that to the letter of the law. That's what you wanted. So why are we dissing him for what happened prior to that? Prior to you being on the, on the dais? Why are we holding him accountable for those actions? So again, let's keep going because I think the more specific we can be, the more helpful it will be for me to understand how we should move forward. Director Williams.
So when I decided to run for school board, I obviously was not happy with the direction of the district. However, I was committed to giving Mr. Wise a chance. And I, I told him that the first time we sat down and talked. During that meeting, Mr. Wise told the four of us, it was before we were sworn in, that he, he did not believe in mandates, which caught me by surprise considering for the last year and a half that there were mandates in place. And this board, before we were elected, said time and time again that Mr. Wise was in charge of making those decisions and you weren't going to be making those for them, for him. So I was a bit surprised. When we came into office and we were sworn in, I thought that at that time, Mr. Wise would drop the mandate because he knew he would have support from the board. And unfortunately, he just didn't do that until someone told him to. So I feel like his, his style of leadership is more reactive instead of proactive. And most recently, I, I don't think that he does a good job representing the board to staff. I've heard from leadership, there are times he misrepresents our intentions. And I don't feel that that's the kind of superintendent that we need.
Can I just ask a question of Director Williams?
Go ahead, Director Ray.
You said misrepresents the staff. Again, a pretty broad statement. Can you be specific?
Well, specifically, it was around the equity policy and that he did say that he was surprised that it wasn't pulled or rescinded, I should say. And that has come from several different people in leadership. And I'm not going to name names because I don't think that's appropriate. But it came from several people that they felt like the intentions were being misrepresented.
So if I could just follow up again. So you were surprised by that when in December, Director Peterson said, we're, we want to rescind and repeal the equity policy? You're surprised that he would say, that Mr. Wise would say, I'm surprised that they passed this resolution that didn't rescind that?
I'll, I'll respond to that.
Well, this is Director Williams.
But you just made a representation of what I said. And what I said is, in December, what I was thinking, and this is me personally, because of the misalignment between implementation and policy, it was coupled, it was rescind and replace, meaning not get rid of it and leave it nothing and burn it down. It was change it, get rid of it and replace it. That we needed an equity policy, but rescind and replace. Basically, I thought that it was not clear and that it needed some significant overhaul. That also was somewhat reflected in the resolution in terms of, I still think the implementation is wrong, but we wanted to give time to have that conversation. In fact, I have a meeting with the EAC chairman coming up to start that conversation since they are newly formed after the resolution. Go ahead, Director Williams.
So in January, our first meeting in January, I think it was the 11th, perhaps, it was stated that there was going to be a resolution. So yes, I am surprised that he would get up and say that because it was clear, yes, in December, President Peterson said one thing. But then in our early January meeting, President Peterson said that Director Weiniger was putting together a resolution. So yes, at that point, it was very clear that it was not going to be rescinded.
And just to respond, Director Williams, I would say I was surprised too. I was pleasantly surprised that you brought to the board a resolution that wasn't rescinding or replacing. And so does that make me misrepresent? I mean, I don't understand why that's so wrong for us to go, wow, they didn't. Go forward with replacing or rescinding it. They actually wrote a resolution that is trying to modify it. How is that, how is that wrong for that statement to be made?
I, I think it puts us in a poor light, that's what.
And then can I ask one more question, Director Williams? You said Mr. Wise should have inferred that this is what the board's desire was around masking. So he should have gone ahead and moved forward without having to wait to be directed. And you do know that that would be unauthorized on his part?
You said time and time again that the board had never told Superintendent Wise whether or not to mask. That was not done by you. And so he was, he was choosing what he felt was best. That was said plenty of times. And, and so when, when we came in and he said, I don't believe in mandates. Okay, now you, now you have a board that's going to support that. Why did he have to wait to be directed, if, if that's how he felt?
And I would add one thing to that, direction of the superintendent. I wonder who directed the lawsuit against the county? I don't remember hearing that in public meeting. I don't remember that being out in discussion. I, I think it still remains, you know, for me, it's unknown to this day. All of a sudden, we have a lawsuit against the county. So did the board direct it or did the superintendent direct the lawsuit?
And can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, so is that, so is your wondering of that because you think that Superintendent Wise directed that lawsuit?
No, my wondering is, you know, you're accusing us of doing things behind the scenes, not having open meetings before things happen, going together and making decisions, not in the public. And, but you're also saying your superintendent just can't act and out of will. So either Superintendent Wise acted on a lawsuit without being directed by this board, or the former board members met, to use your terms, in secret together. You can use your legal term on what it was. And we had a decision made on a very public issue without proper, I guess, And we had a decision made on a very public issue without proper, I guess, sunshine laws, open meeting acts, transparencies and everything else. And that lawsuit is largely why the four of us are sitting here today. So if you could please direct that, address that, Director Ray.
I think it's really important to clarify. I'm just really trying to recenter us in facts and take out emotion because we have to be productive with the time that we have. We are not campaigning. We are all elected. Everything that happened before the election is in the past. Everything that has happened from the time of the election forward is on us. It makes absolutely no difference what happened six months ago or in the first week of school because that's on the previous board and the previous board isn't sitting here. The responsibility of the seven of us is to determine the best leadership. And with all due respect, if you can come up with nothing better than what happened before you were elected, the problem with leadership is the four of you.
Yeah, I would also like a direction. I like the redirection, but I would like the question answered. Who directed this? Did you direct the superintendent? Did the previous board get together? Again, this is very germane because this is basically what you are accusing the current board of doing, of getting together, not having public meetings, making decisions, affecting policy, either directing the superintendent or not directing the superintendent as a group. I just want to know because it seems very much similar to what's going on here. So again, who made the decision? Did the board make the decision or did the superintendent make the decision to sue the district?
I'd be happy to address that. We, so we have an obligation to be public and to have conversations that inform our community of what is happening. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, when we had executive session to discuss negotiations around the sale of property to the Board of County Commissioners, we did not have that conversation on the dais because we need to be able to have legal conversations in private so that we can do what is best for the district and land and lead our district to the best end result.
So are you saying a decision?
I'm speaking, thank you.
Go ahead.
When we are having executive session and we are trying to determine legal course, potential legal courses of action, we are meeting with attorneys. We are having conversations that are going to make, the decisions that we make are going to have potential consequences on the overall legal exposure of our district. We have every right to have that conversation with our attorneys and have legal advice behind closed doors. We violated no policies. It is very, very disingenuous to compare what you have done with having a conversation with attorneys behind closed door. But for the record, yes, I absolutely supported that lawsuit.
Okay, so just for a point of clarification, when was the decision made? Are you now saying that the decision was made in executive session with attorneys where no action is allowed? Or again, I'm going back to it. I'll, I'll drop it, but either this board, the previous board directed the lawsuit against the county or they didn't. One other thing you said, talked about, we need to stop campaigning. I saw the biggest campaign ad for the next election that I've seen last Monday. That to me was a campaign ad. It was sponsored by the union and that was the beginning of frankly, I believe, a pre-coordinated recall effort for the four of us. So that seemed very campaignish to me. In fact, it sparked when I've talked to other directors in other districts around Colorado. It funny enough seems that this playbook is being played out in District 11, here, other places down to the south. And seeing as not only did we have DCF representation in the meeting that immediately followed yours, we have AFT representation. We have Kathy Dormin up there, the state union. So this was not really a local issue when the state's getting all involved. And then she gives a shout out to AFT President Randy Weingarten. So this seems to be a little bit more political than ethical and that is where my grave concerns come. Because if this is going to be about politics and not about academics and other things, I need to have full trust that this is not some type of background movement about politics and elections. I need to know that this is about students, parents and teachers and most of all, parent voice in education. Because if we continue down the union road, especially with some of the standards being proposed by the CDE, this district will be unrecognizable and parents will leave. Go ahead, Director Meek.
There's no evidence that the union had anything to do with Monday night's meeting. I mean, there isn't.
Audience, audience, please. Go ahead, hold your post. Go ahead.
There just isn't. If anyone has evidence, I'd like to see it. But if anything, I feel like what we're talking about right now, you know, the action that's on our agenda, it's, it's about retaliation. And it feels like it's retaliation against the board, the prior board. It feels like it's retaliation against employees signing a letter openly saying what their views are. It feels like it's trying to send a signal to the system. And if anything, it feels like those kinds of actions are what's going to attract a union to try to be recognized again in our district. Because I think those kinds of tactics scare people and they feel like they need a union for protection. So I, I, it's, it's really scary where we're headed. And I think if this board isn't willing to work together, those are signs of instability that happen. Those are signs and there are consequences. And I know I talk about this, you know, actions have consequences. So I happened to find my, my recent sign. This is my, you know, what we used a while ago showing when teacher turnover skyrockets, student achievement plummets. It's instability. That's what happens. When systems turn over, a superintendent, especially a beloved superintendent who has done nothing but serve the board during times that have ripped communities apart over masking and like these politicized issues. All the superintendent has done is served the board. And when you choose to turn over leadership, you are choosing to lose teachers during a teacher shortage that is nationwide. It, actions have consequences. If this is truly about the superintendent's performance, why wouldn't we work with the superintendent to resolve it in a transparent and accountable way and then make decisions? But following a process that shows that we honor people and we recognize people and we give them a chance, not they have a new board two months later, boom, goodbye. Middle, I mean, there are consequences. And I think showing that we'll work together and we give him direction as a board. And when I say we, I fully recognize we, it's mostly the four of you. We'll be making those directives. But that's the way it's supposed to work and I think that's the way we honor people. I think that's the way we show our community. We have an opportunity here. We're divided like so many communities are divided all across our nation. We can show people how diverse viewpoints and individuals can honor each other, can work together. Becky, when you asked about boards and going on and on, that it's our job to hold each other accountable. That's why we sent prior emails when we felt like there were violations. It's each and every one of us, it's our job to try to do the best things possible, which is why you come together, you have those conversations in a retreat, you know, we need to not perseverate, which was one of those words from the prior board, which is I think what you're talking about. But let's show the public that we can work together. Let's show the public that we will listen, that we'll take our time, that we'll do it right. I mean, this is an opportunity for us. And I'm telling you, if, if we don't move forward in that way, it will be mass chaos and turmoil and people fearing for their jobs and all other kinds of consequences. And I think we owe our community that kind of leadership, that we will come together and do what's necessary for our students.
Director Weiniger.
I agree with you that Cory does a great job at serving the board. And I think that's where I was like, I think I want a superintendent that serves our teachers and serves our kids and serves our community. And when we had people coming, having complaints about what's going on and they were giving it to the equity policy, it felt like nothing was done. And then same with masks, it felt like that was about what the board wanted, which, you know, that's great. That's how he operates and that's totally fine. But what I want is some, is a superintendent who more values what's best for our kids and our teachers. And that's just, that's how I view it.
So I appreciate the talk about me. You know, I'm going to tell you, I love this district. I love this county. It's been my home. It's been our home. But I tell you, I don't just serve the board. I serve our staff and our employees. I serve the work that's done and I'll serve our community. I hear the idea of standards and the worry about that. I do not want to see people leave our county and our district. So we will address that. When it comes to the masking and so forth, there's work of the board and then work of the health departments and then I have to work through those. And sometimes I, I as a superintendent would like to have the decision-making power, but don't always get to have the decision-making power. But I will tell you this, in working with all of you, I have been working my tail off as have all the staff, the community. Look how much the community's involved. We need to do that better. Right now, it's tough. I'm not going to make excuses. We need to, we need to all, we all need to get better with listening to the community because there are different topics and division on that side with some of the equity work. But I want you to know, to all of you, each and every one of you and collectively, I believe in this board. I hear division. I don't hear us working through conflict well. But I also believe we take the time, maybe we can. We have an opportunity in front of us. When you talk about leading the students and the staff, having literacy resources and core reading curriculum in every one of our elementary schools, we've not had that. We lost that, as you know, during a time. When you talk about the unity with mass, just like with any teaching of a unit, sometimes you have to coach and say, could we do this better? Sometimes people knock it out of the park, but there's always things going on. There's, there's mistakes that happen, but most of the mistakes aren't critical. And we address those and we get better. And I think with our, our EDOs, to our principals, to our teachers and our teacher leaders, I think we're always looking at addressing that and you have people to ask. When you talk about who's in charge, strong leadership, you empower others. You have high expectations, you get on the same page with those expectations and others are empowered to do that. And I think we have built in that when you look at the culture. And I say this, you know, I'm humbled and I appreciate the support of our staff, but I also agree, we can't have that. There's catalysts for those events and there's ways in which we can change that, the stability. I believe we together with our staff and we together with the board and we together with the community can build that. But I'll do that and I will work to improve and I'll work to be better on alignment. I don't think I said surprised that it was repealed or rescinded. I'm not sure, sure the word that's in there. And if that was ever misrepresented, I'm, I'm not surprised, but I will say, the leading towards that to possibly rescind or repeal was wondered. It was said a little bit. Then it went to resolution, we were working on how do we build this together? We've had conversations and we've had it with others. And I will tell you, even moving this forward, that's our job with our staff to say, what's the intent and what's our purpose and how do we clarify so we get that worded across? But it takes time. So we're going to have to invest that time and get our clear expectations. And with clear expectations, we can set the follow-through and implement. So I just want you to know on those, those pieces, there's going to be mistakes, but I also believe in each of those mistakes, sometimes creates the best opportunity. And I even think with all this, we might have the best opportunity in front of us because we see where the passions are right now. Can we, can we be humble and listen and then move forward and make those better?
Go ahead, Director Ray.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. First of all, to Director Weiniger's wondering if this man supports staff and students, what evidence do you have that he's not? And I know you said your evidence was, well, people were coming to us with concerns. But oh my gosh, have you looked at our email box, you know, just this last 48 hours? We've heard from a lot of staff that says this man is a man of integrity. He's the leader that's going to get the district to a better place. I know we keep on bashing the union as the boogeyman and assuming that all those people out there on the, on the turf outside the building were, were union people. I got to tell you, Director Weiniger, some of those are teachers in Charlie School that were out there. So to assume that there's this power aggression of the union, go out, if you were out there, I wasn't here, but if you talked to those people, I would tell you probably about half of those people don't have membership to the union. So we're identifying the wrong enemy or the wrong force. I want to capture what Director Meek said about working with diverse people. Gosh, I thought we were actually doing a pretty good job when you guys came on. I mean, I made fast friends with Director Myers right away. We enjoy getting to know each other personally. I felt like Director Williams, you and I had really positive conversations and we could differ and be okay with that. Did all the votes go the way I would have hoped? No. Do I support the legitimacy of the votes? Absolutely. But I think Director Meek and Mr. Wise is right on is we have such an opportunity to show what a diverse group of people do, how we lead, how we can model that we can have very polarized perspectives, but we can come together. Just like you said, Director Peterson, you know, we're unanimous when it comes to let's, let's help our teachers out and our employees out with compensation. And that speaks loudly to our community when they see that that's the one thing that we absolutely all agree on. But when, when we go to these drastic measures of trying to say to the superintendent, we don't think you're the right leader without having this conversation, that's what creates the chaos and the division. I'm absolutely in for us to heal and restore and move on for the sake of our kids and our community to show that, yeah, they hit some pretty rough roads. They were angry to the, because I was angry coming in here. I could hardly look at you and you're my friend. And I, and I hated that. I hated that I couldn't even look at you when I sat down here because I was angry. But I think we have an opportunity to say, yeah, that was, that was tough. There were a lot of missteps, whether, and all of us can say, we all made some missteps. But let's not go forward and continue to make missteps by making rash decisions. Let's show people that we're a thoughtful board that takes the time to deliberate, to work with our superintendent, to have those conversations that are positive, to allow our superintendent to get an idea of how we want to move forward. But to, to bring it to this kind of a drastic action isn't helpful for, for anyone. And so I would just again advocate that no action taken tonight. Continue this discussion because we're just starting to really talk about what's best for our kids. Let's have that conversation. Let's talk about whatever direction it is that you're thinking is different than what the previous direction was. Let's have that conversation. I would be delighted. But please, let's not do this kind of drastic move to say, you're out of here because we think you've undermined us. And so far, I haven't seen one single evidence that shows undermining behavior that's been shared tonight. And were your feelings hurt because Cory was surprised? Good grief. Let's get over that. Let's, let's have, let's tell him, Cory, you shouldn't have been surprised. You knew we were going to do something like this. I mean, let's have that conversation. That's what humans and adults do. So I would just encourage us to find a place where we can move forward to show our community that we are unified when it comes to doing what's best for our school district.
I wish, audience, I wish you would have reached out on Friday with that resolve, with that attitude. with that attitude and with that olive branch. What was done on Monday, had none of that attitude, had none of that reach out, had none of that, let's bring us together. If you would have just called Saturday, Sunday, Friday, anytime prior and said, you know, Mike, I, I think we've, we've got a relationship going. I think we've done some good things together. I think, I think this is wrong. I think we, I, I understand what you conveyed to me on Friday, but I really think you're not seeing the big picture. We need to move another direction. Rather than calling your meeting on Friday and noticing it, call me, say, let's notice a special meeting. Let's, let's go into executive session where we can have some private conversations about where people are going. Or let's notice a special meeting. Let's have it out. Let's have this, this discussion on Monday in front of the public. That was not the discussion. In fact, it wasn't a discussion. It was a one-way political stunt. And I put it back to, at that point, you crossed the Rubicon, right? On, unfortunately, on the superintendent, in my mind, I'm not speaking for any other member up here. If you thought that the superintendent, you know, saying, hey, come back to us, let us know what you want to do, Cory, and said, you know what, Mike, we need to have a conversation about this. We need to talk about this as a group, I would have sat down with you, David, but just like you say, there was, you know, there's no communication. There was no calls to us. Your meeting was noticed about the same time Becky's was noticed. I think it was eight minutes before the 24-hour cutoff for the, for the meeting that you had on Monday. And I felt completely, completely betrayed. I thought the same that you did. I thought, you know, Becky made cookies. I thought we were getting some consensus on some of the things that we wanted to do together, knowing that we disagreed, knowing as Susan said, hey, there's four of us. She said, you know, there's four of us, the majority gets the rule, but not if the majority is not being coordinated. It's two-way street. And when that happened on Monday, am I emotional? Yeah, I didn't watch it live, but I watched the recording and I sat there absolutely amazed at what was being done to this district and done to this board. And so you said this is retaliation, that we are talking about the superintendent. This is not retaliation for Monday night because that was after the fact. This is not retaliation for going together. This is not retaliation at all. This is my ability to trust that we are not going to get sucker punched by other three folks that are going to come in when we are trying to work through an issue. And yeah, I've got a lot of trust issues now. That's very obvious. I've said that. But unfortunately, my trust issues now have caused me, and I had issues before with performance, more on the CEO side, more on the capabilities, more on the readiness, more on the other things that we talked about. But now I am put in a position with what happened on Monday, I cannot sit up here, and again, I'm only speaking for myself, and think that we can go forward, frankly, with the superintendent because I'm frankly worried about what the connection remains from someone that you chose. And again, I have concerns with, with that. I don't want to rehash points. I've stated my position now about three times. I think I've stated where I am. It's very, very unfortunate. I, I did not want to be here. What I would like to do at this time, if we can do that.
If I could only respond to the one.
I'll, I'll let you respond.
I would also like to respond.
I'd like responses.
We'll do a couple of responses here, but after responses, I'd like to go down because we can, we can have this conversation all night. Unfortunately, I again, think this is a conversation we could have had on Monday instead of the one that occurred. But please have your responses. And then for the sake of everyone here and everyone watching, I think we have some pretty strong opinions. I think a lot of those have been stated. Please do your responses, but then I would like to get last comments going down the dais and then let's move forward. So Director Meek, if you'd like to go first.
So Mike, I hear your frustration. I mean, it's coming through loud and I can understand why folks, why you would feel that way. And unfortunately, in just two months, there have been multiple instances of you taking unilateral action without the board, without having board authority. And despite being brought to your attention, you moved forward and had this conversation with Cory without talking. And it was unilaterally again. And so this troubling trend just has continued and the infraction was so egregious, it needed immediate attention. And, you know, I'll just read that my passionate email back to you earlier this month because I think it's worth hearing and why I'm not sure I had the trust that action would be taken. So on January 13th, I wrote President Peterson, I'm very disappointed that you reached out to seek input regarding the joint public statement, public health statement, and then decided to unilaterally move forward with it without even acknowledging my response to you or trying to address the policy violations and concerns that were mentioned. Furthermore, you intentionally hid the fact that this video would be released and distributed this week during our public meeting on Tuesday night where you had the perfect opportunity to be transparent with this action. This is not leading with honesty and integrity. As board president, your job is to serve the board, period. I encourage you to ask the following questions before you take unilateral action in the future. One, am I acting within policies established by this board? Two, am I focused on what is good for all students? Three, am I acting as an individual board member or is the board as a whole acting? And four, are we allowing our educational leader, our one employee, the superintendent, to do the job he was hired to do? I've copied all board members for information only. Again, the same exact thing happened where we had a board meeting on Tuesday. You did not talk to the board about the action that you were taking on Friday with the superintendent. You were copied on the 24-hour notice. You could have reached out and had communication as well. Trust takes time and actions destroy trust. So we have to look at how we can move forward with building trust, but the past actions do have consequences.
Other directors.
I can just very briefly add, and this may feel disjointed because the conversation has shifted, but David shared that he would like to work together. And you shared, to paraphrase and correct me if you, if you'd like to edit, but you said we could have until Monday, that you felt sucker punched and you no longer have trust, correct? I don't want to just speak for you.
Yeah, I said that I thought we were working together till Monday and that there was a large violation of trust.
Sure.
That does not mean, that does not mean that trust can be regained. It's a lot harder to get back.
It always is.
But it is. But yeah, I felt if I had a trust meter on, that was, I frankly think ticking up, it, it, it went almost to zero watching the Monday meeting.
Just to re-center on facts, I know exactly how you felt watching that meeting because when you called me on Friday morning and told me what had happened, I felt the same amount of emotions. I was crying. I was in the car line. I, I almost had to, I apologize to everybody at Mountain Vista. I was not being a good car line parent. I was not okay. And it was because you violated my trust. What started this entire process is that you asked me for a phone call. You didn't say, hey, I really want to get your input on this. This is going to take a while. This is a significant conversation. You said, I need less than 15 minutes. That's not an invitation to have a conversation. You were informing me of what had been done. And you informed me of something that shook me to my core. And that trust was gone. And I'm not sure what, what alternatives, going into the meeting on Monday night was not something I took lightly. I did not feel like I had any alternatives. So I, I just really need to be clear with the, the chain of events here because if we're really looking at facts, the first chain of event, the first fact in our chain of events is that you met with Cory. You did not tell me you were going to do this. You did not care enough to ask my opinion. You did not even care enough to, to have a conversation, even if you were going to move forward. It would have felt very different and built more trust if you had said, like your opinion about this. You informed me what was happening and you then are acting like it's, it's my fault that there's no trust and that's really not sitting well with me.
Audience, please stop. Go ahead, Director Ray.
Thank you. First of all, Director Peterson, communication is a two-way street, you know? And, and when, when that video with you portraying the exact statement, the three of us said, no, don't do this. When that video was shown to me in the morning, the first thing I did was I reached out to you. And you can find a text that says, what the heck? Why are you doing this? How is this building unity amongst us? That was the first thing I did. When this meeting on Monday night was noticed, the first thing I did was I emailed you four o'clock, an hour before the posting was going to go up, to say, we're doing this. Feel free to reach out and communicate to the other directors. You had just as much of a ability to reach out to me as I did to you. You had, you should have reached out to us Thursday night, quite honestly, because that's when you had legal counsel, your, your conversation. And I believe that if I understood correctly, that was the assumption, is that you would reach out to us that night, even before you met with Cory on Friday morning. That's how communication works. So to sit in this chair and say, well, you didn't, I have, and it's a two-way street. And I would say, absolutely, if you saw that going up on Monday, you should have gotten on the phone and said, what the heck? What are you guys doing? I would have been more than happy to have a conversation with you. But when you, the four of you, said an ultimatum that said, by Tuesday night, he had to make a decision, you really took options away from how we were able to even respond. And like Director Hanson, I think we are all just in shock and flabbergasted and rocked to the core to go, what do we do? Something that this, is this significant, has to be discussed with our public as a collective board. And I think that's why it happened the way it did. But absolutely, we, we should, we should have those one-on-ones and talk to each other. I also want to just address something you said earlier. You, you, you've made it like, you, you've presented appearance that Cory and I still have this allegiance. And I want to tell you something. I haven't talked, the first time I talked to this man was tonight since all these antics occurred. I haven't texted him. I haven't spoken to him. And I, and I will also tell you that when I was the president, yeah, I talked to Cory almost daily, sometimes two or three times a day. When you became president, that was cut off. And, and I'll be honest, I was a little hurt because I, I kind of like talking to Cory. But I haven't had, the conversations that you evidently think I'm having with Cory are non-existent. And I again, take offense to you assuming that he has allegiance to any of us, more so than the seven of us. So to me, that's also destroying trust when there's some assumptions that he has this inroad with any of us more so than, than the other. So let's get rid of that and let's make sure that we recognize, you're going to have more communication with him because you're the president. I respect that. I understand the role. I understand that you're going to have to talk to him far more than I, but let's not portray this notion that he's allegiance to some and not the other.
Other directors. Go ahead, Superintendent Wise.
I'd like to wait till all of you are finished. So what I'd request is, directors, and then since this is about me, I wouldn't mind just reflecting. So I want to make sure that all of you go with them and just ask if I can then speak.
If it's helpful for you, I can also volunteer that I did not have a conversation with Cory from the day that you were sworn in until there was an outbreak, that one of the first rounds of outbreaks. And I had a phone call with him for maybe 10 minutes just to get some clarification because I was confused by the, the email that was coming out from the school. And I very purposefully tried to step back to give Cory space to establish relationships with you. And I felt like that was going really well. But if, if, if you want to know the facts, I didn't have a conversation with Cory for a solid six to eight weeks.
And I'm happy to weigh in too. I can't remember what conversations I've had, if any. Maybe there's been one or two.
We went to coffee and Kayla and I went to coffee as part of my invite to everybody.
Okay, okay. So I remember though, looking at the board, the board calendar and seeing that there was a two-on-one meeting that popped up on the calendar and saying, what? There's two-on-one meetings? You know, and I haven't been engaged in those and thinking that because it was the, the meeting that was scheduled. So the level of communication with the superintendent is very low.
Thank you. So if we can go down, did you have something? Director Myers, go ahead.
Okay, this is really off the wall. Okay, so get ready and I'm sorry. First of all, with the 700 emails that I have in my inbox and I know Elizabeth has helped me, Susan guided me, I'd like to have a clean slate and try not to answer because I spent all days in my, all day in my pajamas trying to answer emails. So I maybe like, can we do what they do and have a clean slate? My second thing is, I'm not real certain that this is the best way to bring unity with a lawsuit. Is it some type of a lawsuit or something for the four of us? Third, this is really what I want to, because to address, because I'm, I'm a teacher. You know, I was a teacher. And I would like to ask Sid Rundell, could you tell these people the type of person that I am? The character? Are, is he allowed to do that? So that maybe those emails that are coming from the teachers and Aaron that know that I love teachers and I love kids. And how long did I work with you, Sid?
Becky, I want to respond instead of Sid because that's putting him on, in a really uncomfortable position. But I have gotten to know you as well. And I know we've had a chance to, I've worked with you more than anyone else as we worked through the role of the secretary. And I've shared with you that our community feels so strongly about so many things and it's, it's gutting. And I know I shared when I resigned as secretary that I had to step away for my own mental health because people are name-calling, people are making accusations, people are, people are vicious. And I see you and I hear you and I know how much your heart is hurting because mine was too. I think it is a very honest and raw reflection of where our community is right now. And I'm not sure that a clean slate of just wiping the emails out is what we need to do. We need a clean slate as a board. We need to start as a group of seven who are going to work together and be willing to listen to one another. And these are issues that are our issues. These are not issues that are Cory's issues. And I see how strongly you care and love, love these teachers. Have you talked with any of the teachers about how much they and care, care and love Cory? I don't think you could, and I know because of COVID, it's been almost impossible to go into schools, but I mean this when I tell you, I have spent just hundreds of hours in schools and our staff adore this leader. And they would go to the ends of.
Audience, please. Thank you.
Because of his ability to bring people together, they would go to the ends of the earth for him. Our only opportunity to save and unify this district right now is through Cory. And I am so fearful for what happens if that, if literally the peg that is holding this together gets pulled out. If you genuinely care so much about teachers, take, take some time, push this down the road a little bit and go and hear those teachers. Go and talk to them. Go and listen to them. Go and spend time in those schools. I would guarantee you that every single school in this district. I would guarantee you that every single school in this district would open their doors and welcome you and would love to tell you how Cory has helped them, how Cory has benefited them, how Cory has kept this ship afloat for the past two years. And I just, I think that's my biggest concern right now is that this is so rushed. We have to honor our bigger community. We have to honor our staff. Our staff have to have an opportunity to have a meaningful way to communicate. And we need to be that voice, we need to be the board that's going to listen. And I understand, I know how much it hurts. It's part of the job, and I wish it was better. And I think we have the ability to make it better. I think we have the ability to bring this community together and stop all of the ugliness and the hatred. But the answer and the way we do that is not by pulling the peg out that is holding this together. It is not by getting rid of Cory.
Do you want to respond?
I would love to hear from Becky, please.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we have worked together, but I don't think it would be putting Sid on the spot would it said. I mean, I know that you stepped out in one meeting and asked one of the comments, so I felt that that could lead me to maybe ask Sid to verify so that the people out there that are sending me the emails, and I have been getting phone calls, and I've actually had two invitations, and I visited a school this week, and I've got an invitation to visit a school next week, and that's my goal. If I can do one school a week, I'll do it. I mean, I want the invitation to go back to Ranchview where Erin is. I mean, I've known Erin forever. And so...
So let's have that conversation with Erin.
I've been planning on it.
But it truly isn't Sid's responsibility to say, "Becky's a great person." It's your actions right now that you're being judged by. You're an elected official, and no matter how many times my friends can say, "I'm a great person," the people who disagree with the decisions that I've made are not going to believe that. And there's no magic wand to wave to have everybody be kind.
Just to bring it back, this is, I appreciate Becky, but this is not a debate over is Becky nice or not. I know she is.
Wasn't my question. I'm just trying to help.
I might ask for a motion on unanimous consent that Becky is a good person and is trying. But we are getting a bit of far field. So again, unless there's other things, thank you, Becky. But I'd like to just go down, I'll go down the roll to make it fair. Just like to hear a final statement, you know, where you are, why, again, if you don't want to summarize.
I would actually like clarification. I'm not sure what we're, are we talking about tabling this? Are you talking about terminating Cory for cause? Are you talking about asking Cory for his resignation? I haven't had a conversation that has been clear with what you even would like to see happen from tonight.
Yeah, I've stated my position, so...
I don't, you want to fire Cory for cause?
I'm sorry? No. No, we don't have a motion on the table.
I'm trying to ask what you want to happen. I can't make a statement if I don't know what you want.
Okay, we can put a motion on the table, but where I am prior to the motion is, unfortunately, I find myself in the position where, again, looking at two things, looking at trust and looking as an objective CEO-level capabilities and, you know, what's right for the district. I get that Cory is beloved. I will stipulate that. But just because a leader is loved and respected doesn't mean he has the skills, the vision, and the capabilities to lead the large district. And for both the trust reasons and for the fact, I think we need a stronger leader in there for a variety of reasons I've stated previously in rehash.
Is that termination for cause under paragraph C of his contract, or is that unilateral termination by the district under paragraph D?
In my mind, it would be unilateral termination, in my mind.
So that will cost the district a year of salary. All right.
Yes.
And significant costs in turnover from a significant number of employees.
Director Meek.
Are we giving Cory a chance to speak first? Because I think that may influence my comments.
Absolutely. And I believe what he said was he would like directors to go first, and then he would like to speak.
Sure. So making board decisions, making board decisions begins with having information that reflects the diversity of our public. It's not fulfilling a campaign promise. It's the diversity of our entire public. And I've heard you say, "We haven't made this promise." But at the same time, you've also said, "This is what we were elected to do, to change the direction." So you're equating the direction of the district with this action. And I can say it again and again, the direction of the district is decided by the board, and the superintendent implements that direction. The board needs to educate itself regarding the implications of various options so that it can make the best decision that's most reflective of the public as a whole. There are costs to any decision that we make, and being able to talk about those is really helpful. Unless the board does this, it's not fulfilling its accountability to those for whom it holds the organization's trust. I believe backdoor conversations led to a decision, and a decision was made that told the superintendent, "Resign, or you're still leaving." I mean, it was an ultimatum. We're sitting here tonight, there's no more clear evidence that an ultimatum was made. So these decisions have consequences. I think if you truly cared about our entire community, you would not put this agenda item on the agenda for action without allowing for public comment. And yes, it's painful. You've seen the emotion that comes through from the community. But our community deserves to have a say in this action. And you're not giving them a say by not having that on this agenda for public comment. And that is changing precedent from how we have always conducted business. And to do so with this kind of decision, it's just wrong. It's wrong. Our community deserves better. Our students deserve, they deserve better. And our leadership is pitiful at this point if we are moving forward in this manner.
Director Wenderger.
I completely agree that Cory is very beloved in this district, and I don't want to take that away from him. There's also a lot of people who disagree with a lot of things that have gone on since he's led this district. And it's just what's overtaking my decision on thinking we can have someone who will bring this community forward more than what has happened in the past. But I do not want to take away what he's done for this district for 26 years, and I really appreciate everything. And I definitely would love to hear more of what you have to say before I make my final decision.
Director Williams.
So I also agree. I like Cory, and I know he's beloved in this district. And this is not a campaign promise. It's not cleaning house. Simply, it's, I've lost trust in the leadership of Mr. Wise. And I hear you, all of you, principals, staff, teachers, I hear you. I see you. I've gotten your messages. I've read them. I understand. It doesn't mean that he's the right person for the job.
I've already stated my position. Director Myers.
I believe I stated my position earlier.
Director Ray.
Well, I'd like to defer to a couple things. First of all, I want to read into record the student voice because, you know, we're sitting here, the seven of us, without public comment, which I agree with Director Meek is absolutely unacceptable. I mean, we did three meetings for CU South to decide if we wanted to buy a frickin' building, and yet here we sit discussing our superintendent and a drastic change in our leadership and a drastic upheaval in our system. And we're going to do this in three hours. How does that make any sense? We, CU South, we even sent out a survey to ask the public, "Do you have any questions?" And here we sit without having any kind of public comment or public feedback or public input addressed to us in this meeting. So because of that, let me read some things into record for you. This is from our students. "On behalf of the Student Advisory Group and the student population of 64,000 students that we represent, we wish to express our disapproval towards the Board of Education's actions in presenting Superintendent Wise an ultimatum. We believe it is absolutely unacceptable that a portion of the board is considering such a severe and impactful action without raising legitimate concerns or addressing the entirety of the board. Additionally, the acting board members fail to consider the input of students, staff, or the community when considering this malicious initiative. We also object to the lack of due process and decency shown to Superintendent Wise, who has been a dedicated, servient, and responsive leader to the school district and surrounding community for more than 25 years. Multiple Student Advisory Group members, including Lucas and I, served on the panel for superintendent interviews less than one year ago. And we believe that no one is more qualified to be the superintendent than Mr. Wise. He leads with the students' best interests in mind, and his intentions promote an excellent environment for education. These malvolent actions of the board set a poor example of leadership to the student population the board is sworn to serve. Not to mention this sets a precedent for future leadership to dispose of a superintendent simply because they disagree with the views or the timeframe in which they were hired. We believe that these actions are politically motivated at heart and only serve to cause numerous negative consequences for the students and staff in our district. As representatives of the district, and I'm sorry, as representatives of the student voice, we demand that this action is reviewed and investigated to ensure transparency, legality, and due process are being applied. If you have any questions or comments regarding this matter, we'd be more than happy to speak with you. We appreciate your time and consideration, and we hope you consider the impact your decisions will have on students, teachers, and the Douglas County community before conducting any further actions." And that's signed off by not only the author of, Josh is one of the leaders of Student Advisory Group, but Lucas, Nick, and Sue Jay. That's our students talking, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Director Ray. Do you have something else?
And then we just received this letter from not only previous board directors, but board directors that have served this district way back in the 90s. "As former elected directors of the Douglas County School District Board of Education, we continue to be dedicated to supporting excellent governance practices that will best support our students, DCSD teachers and staff, families, and community members. We are a diverse group representing many different opinions, and it is not our purpose to weigh in on the current board policies, decisions. We recognize that our current volunteer DCSD directors were elected by our community to guide the district and work with the board's one employee, the superintendent, to support implementation of the board's guidance. However, we are united by our strong belief that for DCSD to continue to progress, it is essential for each director to understand and comply with all the laws and DCSD policy governance as they make board decisions. We are calling on each DCSD director to commit to completing the appropriate study, education, and/or training necessary to help them understand the scope of their individual authority and duties to our Douglas County community. Anything less creates unnecessary risk and instability for our students and community." That's Directors Chancio Shore, Graziano, Emily Hanson from way back in 2005, and she was around when we had this horrific disruption before. And I got to pause there. Director Myers, you were a deploy when we went through that horrific period of time. And for you to be signing on to doing the exact same thing is deplorable. It's also signed off by Peter Calamine. I think he served on the board for 18 years before there was even limitations of terms. Emery Lemieux, Claire Leonard, Kevin Lung, Vicky Starkey, Wendy Vogel. These are people that came before us. And these people are asking us to govern with excellence and stop the madness of doing this kind of knee-jerk kind of reaction and attacking the very person that needs to lead us through these tumultuous times. That's my position. Director Peterson.
Thank you, Director Hanson.
I've already expressed a good part of my opinions, but I think I just need to, I need to share that as I've sat here tonight and I've listened, genuinely listened to each one of you, I am gravely concerned. I think my concerns coming into tonight are different than the concerns I will leave with, but I think there's no greater danger to our system right now than the combination of arrogance and ignorance that I have seen tonight. You cannot tell our staff that I hear you, I see you, I respect you, but I know more than you after eight weeks of sitting in this seat while you've been in yours for 20. And I have fought for these teachers every minute since I decided I was going to run for this job. Our teachers, our staff deserve better. I said from the beginning, I've always been so upfront, the way we give our students, the way we put kids first, to use your words, the way we present our kids the absolute best educational opportunities is by having the absolute best in that classroom with them each and every day. And that is something that comes from the top down, and that is what impacts our kids. That is what our responsibility is. Our teachers deserve better so that our kids can have better. We owe our teachers and our staff to listen to what they are asking for. We do not know better, and it is frightening to think we do.
Thank you, Director Hanson. Superintendent Wise.
The irony a little bit is, this was about me and my performance. I'd love to go back and have the time where we can go through each of those, step those out, find the root cause. There's times where I wonder if you want to fire each other or fire me. I'm not so sure, in my contract, it calls out an opportunity to do that. I'm not so sure if I'm going to convince any of you if I go back through each event because one statement or another in a quick pause, I don't know if it convinces. But I do believe in what we've done. When it comes to policy governance, we have a system in which we are evaluating and demonstrating, showing, monitoring reports of what we are actually accomplishing and where we need to go. Not just the good, but what are the next steps? We haven't had monitoring reports where it's actually showing evidence and showing a plan and implementation. And we've had conversations at times about the quality of those things. And when you talk about leadership and being a CEO, CEOs value every single employee and every single student. We are in classrooms covering, so our students are in person. We are covering lunch duty. We're helping nutrition services. People pick up with custodial because we are, every single employee in this district makes this district work and makes it amazing. And we model that every single down the row. So it's not just about me. We have phenomenal people in this district. And leadership for students because students matter most. Look at the profiles we're starting to see on our alumni. It's not just what happens in PK 12. Where are our students after they graduate? We are at the top in graduation rates or right there. Our eye-read tests through COVID have not dipped. We have reading resources and training for our teachers. We have reading resources and training for our teachers. We're rebuilding and instituting more towards math again because while we did a purchase, we now need to do it for multiple years. When we talk about academic excellence, it's there. We talk about our students getting concurrent enrollments, being prepared for workforce, industry, military, university. Our students are more prepared than any coming out of this district. And amidst of all this COVID and transitions, and unfortunately, all the politics with everything, we're leading to find innovation. And people believing in myself and the staff and what Douglas County and Douglas County schools can be with CU campus and the legacy campus. The legacy campus where we have CU, DU, ACC. New programs, better programs, concurrent enrollment, career technical education. We're at the forefront, and we are doing amazing things throughout the challenges. But whether or not that's evidence enough of where we are even during these tough times and working with multiple viewpoints, I still want to say to you, we have an opportunity. Let us lead. Let me lead. Let's see what can happen. Let's take the handcuffs off and work together, and let's see what can happen. Challenge me. I like to be the underdog. Let me prove, and if I don't, then come have that conversation. But please don't do it over weekend. And with the idea that the next day I have to choose to leave the district that I love. Or you're going to go for a cause, which bring it. I love this district, and I believe in myself, I believe in our people, and I believe in all of you. We can do this. Give us a chance. Give me a chance, a real chance. And I'll say this. It's not about me, even though unfortunately, tonight, we're talking about me. But let's put this out there with everybody. Every valuation, let's put where you can see what I need to get better at. We are always about getting better because if we're standing still, we're going backwards. Mistakes will happen. We won't be perfect, but we will drive to be the very best we can be because Douglas County wants to be the best district in the state. But we're going to be the best district for every single person. And I love you all and to our community, whether you know me or you don't, whether you like me or you don't, whether we have different viewpoints, where we've had challenges together, I promise you, I fight with you, even though we might come up with the same plan. But we can do that. And so I challenge you to say, let's do it together. We all have to take our actions. We have to model with our kids. Our own behaviors in nights like this, our own behaviors out in the public when no one's watching. We need to model, and we can do that. So I love you all. I value you. I believe in Douglas County, and I believe in what we can become. So thank you for the opportunity just to share.
Thank you. Audience, please. Okay, I think we've heard from all the directors. Is there a motion for tonight? Director Weiniger.
I motion to exercise unilateral termination of the superintendent's contract as specified under Section 8D of the contract to be effective immediately upon passing a vote of the majority of the Board.
Motion by Weiniger.
I make a secondary motion that we postpone this conversation until we've given our public ample time to provide feedback in a public setting to their elected officials and give us time to get our act together to direct our superintendent.
Second.
Got a secondary motion to postpone by Ray, seconded by Meek. And we do not have a second on the initial resolution just for the record right now.
Second.
I understand there's a second on the original motion by Williams. We'll take care of the second resolution to postpone first. With no discussion, we'll call the roll on the second motion to postpone. Hanson.
Just to be clear, we're voting to postpone this?
This is the motion to postpone this to a later date.
Aye.
Meek.
As I've said earlier, our precedent has always been to allow our community to have public comment as difficult as it may be to sit there and go through, given the kind of reaction we're hearing, 24 hours of public comment. It's our duty. It is what we signed up for, and not to move forward with giving that opportunity to our public is wrong. So I do support this secondary amendment.
It's an aye for Meek. Myers?
No.
Peterson, no. Ray?
What harm does it do for us to take our time? My goodness. Is this how you believe effective governance is, is to ram everything through, under the cover, not making it public, not giving our public an opportunity to respond? This is not, this is not effective governance. It does no harm for us to take our time, especially for a decision that is this monumental. You have no idea the devastation that you will cause with the motion the Director Weiniger just made. It will have ripple effects not only for tomorrow and the rest of the year, but for 12 years, Director Myers. You know this. It will have long-term damage on this district. So I'm an emphatic aye. Slow it down and let us discuss.
Ray is an aye. Williams?
No.
Weiniger?
No.
Okay, second motion is defeated, three to four to postpone. They'll now take up the first motion made by Director Weiniger. This is for unilateral termination. Director Hanson.
Pass.
Hanson is a pass. Meek?
Pass.
Pass.
No.
You're voting no for termination.
I'm sorry, yes.
Mike, that was her vote. You do not get to come in and coerce her into changing her vote. And if she cannot follow what is happening, it is not your responsibility to bring her up to speed. Her vote is no.
I am confirming her vote. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, can I go home?
Yes, you can.
You don't have to look at me. What is your vote on this?
Please read the motion then.
This is the motion to, made by Director Weiniger, seconded by Director Williams, and it was to exercise unilateral termination of the superintendent's contract as specified under Section 8D of the contract to be effective immediately upon passing a vote of the majority of the Board. That is the motion before the Board. Peterson, aye.
I need a pass.
Ray is pass. Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
I'm obviously a very emphatic no. I knew this would be a four-three vote when we started this evening, and I knew we were going to lose a superintendent who will always hold a place in the Hall of Fame as one of our most beloved leaders.
Director Meek?
I am not done. I have struggled to accept that nothing that I can say, nothing that I can say or do tonight will change the outcome, and that's a hard place to be. But the actions that took place tonight were decided long before this evening, and I know there are, there are people watching this meeting across our state, and probably at this point, it's become such a disaster across the United States. And I need to be very clear that this decision was not about performance in any way and that this is politics in its ugliest and purest and most destructive form. This is an attack on public education, and I hope that it is something that will wake up our community, our, our state, and our country. There are very calculated efforts that are happening right now, and only the people have the power to stop that. I still believe in public education, and I still believe that all means all, and every student should have a right to an extraordinary education through a public system. So I'm going to tell any of the districts that are listening out there tonight. Cory is an extraordinary leader. He has an unparalleled ability to genuinely connect with employees. He can make every single person feel valued and feel like they are a part of something bigger and something special, and that they are truly changing the world. One day at a time, one child at a time, he can motivate people to go above and beyond because he is right there with them, and they believe so deeply in him and his vision. He will listen with complete vulnerability to any feedback, and he will work every single day to do the very best, the very best for your staff because he wants to be the best. He wants your school system to be the best, and he wants the best outcomes for your families and your students. So I may not have a voice in Douglas County right now, but I still have a voice for public education as a whole. And any district who is looking for the qualities that I just described, which only come once in a great, great while, we have it sitting right here, and we are turning our backs and refusing to acknowledge what we have. So please, I will be the first in line to be a shining reference for him, and I know there will be thousands of our staff who would be willing to do the same.
Director Meek?
To hear you say that our superintendent doesn't have the skills, vision, or capabilities to lead is ludicrous. To allow a superintendent who has the skills, capabilities that he has to walk out the door at this point in time. COVID, the past two years, has been the most challenging and difficult time in history for public education, for everyone in our entire nation. Cory stepped in when our prior superintendent left at the beginning of a school year. Cory has worked nonstop to ensure stability in this system, to build a leadership team, to build everyone. It's ludicrous to say he does not have the skills or capabilities or be able to provide any kind of evidence. Ignorance and arrogance, it's a, it's a toxic combination, and our students and our community are going to have to pay that price. Backdoor conversations and dealings cannot be the way that we move forward in this community. Our students have pointed it out. They've, they've identified it. Our students' futures are at stake, and we must, we must work together and demonstrate our commitment. And all you're doing tonight is demonstrating you don't care. Our students, our staff, on behalf of all of them, Cory, thank you so much for everything that you have given to this district. And I'm sorry that you're being put through this. It's wrong, and shame on you.
Your vote then is no.
I think it's a no.
Director Ray?
I can't even look at you. So mark this day, Director Weiniger. This is the day that what happened six years ago when your mother left our district. Mark this day. You're responsible. You're responsible for every teacher that walks out of this district because of your vote tonight. Director Williams? You don't even have kids in our district-run schools. Mark this day as the day that you impacted thousands of kids, and you can go back to your charter school and do your thing, and this doesn't impact your charter school. But mark this day that you have devastated the education of over 60,000 kids. Director Myers? I have no idea who you are. One moment you say no, which I think is what your heart was telling you, and then all of a sudden, you get a glance from the president, and all of a sudden, it's, oh, oh, I need to change that vote. Mark this day as, 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 again, the day that you're putting this district through the hell that you experienced when you were an employee. And Director Peterson? Mark this day as a fail for you to bring the seven of us together. You had an opportunity, you had an opportunity tonight to at least give us a chance. Give us a chance to collaborate and talk and work through this. But no, we're going to push this through like gangbusters and not give our public even an opportunity to talk. This is a failed, Director Peterson, that you're going to live with for many years to come. I can't even look at that man over there. I've known him. He's my friend. He and I have worked side by side as principals. We've given it our all for kids, and what you're doing tonight is horrific. I've never seen anything in our district like it, including those years several years ago that we always refer to as the Dark Ages. You have just activated the Dark Ages for this district. So congratulations. My vote is a no.
Measure is passed, four to three. And audience, please do not react. Moving to the next item. Adjournment, do I have a motion?
What does this mean for leadership at this point in time? I kind of think people are going to be asking, what does this mean? Can we just talk through that a little bit?
Sure. Before adjournment?
What does it mean? Who's in charge right now?
What it means is we have a succession plan, that we have two acting superintendents, or super-deputies, Abner and Deputies Hyatt, will take on the role of acting superintendent. And then the next step is for us to obviously have public meetings, public gatherings to get together and talk about what that is. That's 10. That will be scheduled as soon as possible based on director availability.
Well, actually, you don't get to decide. We as a Board decide what the process looks like. So I think of what I'm trying to understand, and I think what the public is curious, what does it mean? So thank you for explaining the succession plan, the deputy superintendents are stepping up. When are we, as a seven-member Board, going to discuss what the plan is? Because we, as a seven-member Board, need to decide that.
I absolutely agree, and we will have our meeting on Tuesday. I will ask for director availability for next week. Once we have a time where all seven directors can get together, we can get into a work session and start that discussion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Weiniger.
Second.
Second by Myers. Hanson?
Aye.
Meek? Myers?
Aye.
Peterson, aye. Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
Passed, seven to zero.